All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. This is a regular meeting of the Allendale Land Use Board at which formal action will be taken on the items listed on the agenda, and upon any other matters which may properly come before the Land Use Board. The requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied through posting on the public bulletin board and in a municipal building and the borough website and by publication in the record on December twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, with copies being sent to the Ridgewood News. Certain agenda items will be open to the public for comment and/or testimony. The Board will advise the public when such matters are open for their comment or their testimonies. Um, before we, before we start, I'd like to have everybody please join me for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and never seen just as one.
Thank you, everybody. Hey Linda, please, can I have a roll call?
Vice Chairwoman Bergen.
Here.
Board Member Lozala. Board Member Petrino. Board Member Gugliaro.
Present.
Councilman Deloissio.
Here.
Board Member Dallo.
Here.
Chairman Sarico.
Here.
Mayor Wissenski.
Here.
Olden and Butler.
Here.
Olden and Cuddy.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Um, next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four Land Use Board Regular Meeting. Um, a little bit of an odd meeting, but I thank everybody for working with us to get that, to get that meeting completed. Um, any comments on the meeting minutes, please? Okay, seeing none, I bring it back and I have a motion to approve the minutes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Thank you, Greg.
Who's the second?
Greg.
Vice Chairwoman Bergen.
Yeah.
Board Member Lozala. Councilman Deloissio.
Yes.
Chairman Sarico.
Yes.
Olden and Butler.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so moving on, um, there are agendas up here in the front. I am going to change the agenda around slightly. Um, we have two, uh, two things ahead of the, um, Allendale rehab that I'll move to the third because I think the first two will be relatively quick. So, thank you, everybody, for understanding and working with us. Um, the first application that I would like to call forward, please, is Mr. Ken Magro, at three forty-five Hillside Avenue, Allendale, oh seven four oh one, block one oh one, lot seven, to remove and replace an existing driveway that is greater than thirty-five feet. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Counsel. Mr. Magro, will both of you be testifying or just one of you this evening?
Just, just, just me.
That's you, okay?
Yeah.
Would you mind raising your right hand, sir, please, sir? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
For the record, would you state your name, spell your last name, and provide an address?
Sure, Ken Magro, M A G R O, three four five Hillside Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, Mr. Magro, uh, real fast, in a quick synopsis, tell us why you're here and what you need to do, please, or what you're asking to do, I shouldn't say.
We're asking to widen our driveway.
Excuse me one minute, excuse me one minute. Were you hearing? Linda, you getting all this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we want to widen our driveway. We're paving the driveway and we want to widen it to allow us to, uh, turn around eat more easily and not have to back out onto Hillside Avenue.
Okay.
It's gonna exceed the thirty-five foot, uh, ordinance.
Okay.
That's basically, in a nutshell.
And in the, um, in the current, in its current configuration, I mean, are we talking about moving, you know, what, what is, what would be encompassing, what you need to do?
What we're doing right now, so we had.
And everybody has the plans and thoughts, okay?
Very good. So, we had temporarily as a stopgap, we have four cars, uh, in the property, two are in the garage, two are in the driveway. You can't easily get the cars out of the driveway or turn around the way they're positioned. As a stopgap measure, we had put some gravel, some gravel parking areas off to the side, knowing that someday we were gonna pave when it came time to replace driveway. So, we would be looking to get, remove the gravel area and pave that instead. A portion of that area.
Okay.
Actually, it's shrinking size.
So, the size is not changing?
Size is actually gonna shrink.
The size will shrink, okay, and the location remain, I'm sorry.
Yeah, location's the same, but the actual area will, will shrink.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, all right. Board members, any questions, comments? We all have the plans?
Sorry, when you were saying, um, the area will shrink, like, you're talking about that, what you've kind of put with gravel.
Correct. Yeah, so right now, that area is, is wider than it's gonna be if, if you look at the, um, the site survey and you look there, you'll see an area where, in red, I think I've outlined, that's the gravel area. So, that's gonna be gone and the paved area is kind of in a gray color.
That nine, or four hundred fifty-six square feet?
That's correct. Yep. So, that area's gonna shrink, actually. And it'll be, just gonna plant grass wherever there's nothing there.
Just gotta plant grass in front of that, so.
So, in the picture shown, you had, it looks like you have three stalls there. So, you're basically only gonna have two and then grass areas?
Correct. And there's not gonna be that divider down the center where it's, it's gonna be, the driveway will look as one, basically, yeah.
Thank you. And again, the thirteen foot remains the thirteen foot.
Correct. Yeah.
So, do you plan on using these as parking spots or just simply turnaround?
They will be, well, they're gonna help both. We will have cars parked there. You'll see in one of the photos that there's, I think, cars parked there. Cause if we don't park the cars there, when we pull cars out of the drive, the garage, the two garage cars, you can't. You, you'd have to make like a six-point turn to be able to turn around to get up to the Tilted Avenue without backing out.
And to be clear, is it, in, in, the shrub, the shrub will remain?
Correct. That's still there. Yeah, that's a holly bush.
Okay, I'm sorry, holly, thank you.
Yeah.
And this white area?
The white area, that's, that's gone.
That's gone.
That will be gone. Those are the, the rocks that are gonna be gone.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
But it looks like there's a retaining wall behind and then, um, some shrubs or
There, there is.
trees that are kind of blocking or shielding from the neighbors?
Correct. So, if you look at page, uh, that's three six five Hillside Avenue, the Belldowski. So, if you look at page seven, for example, this is me standing in three six five, this is in their yard looking towards ours. So, what they have, first of all, the elevation that they have, they're about three feet higher than we are, just the way they built the house. Now, the retaining wall, then they have a berm on top of that. And in addition to that, they've got sixteen, uh, green giant, uh, abracadines there. So, it, it, there's plenty of screening, judgmental call, but screening that, uh, they wouldn't necessarily, they'll see the cars. Cars are there now anyway. It's just, it's gonna be paved rather than seeing the rocks. I would argue that the rocks are pretty ugly.
That's the picture you're referring to.
That, uh, actually, for this one here, uh, page seven, bottom of page seven.
Oh, I think.
Okay.
Okay. That's good.
Okay.
That, that would be in, at three six five, the neighbor. Uh, maybe you don't have that one? Yeah, that would be at three six five, looking towards our area. Okay, there's, there's screening that they put up when they built that.
I have a question regarding your survey map.
Sure.
You show a nineteen-foot dimension.
Yeah.
Call it front to back to the car?
Mm-hmm.
And then you show a twenty-four-foot dimension. Two spaces, I guess, at twelve feet.
That's the width, yeah, correct.
And you'll be able to hold thirteen? Cause it's certainly not the scale.
Uh, actually, it'll be greater than thirteen. That thirteen is where, to the, where the gravel is now. But even more space to the, to the, uh, the property line.
Well, the thirteen shows to what is the, the rectangle that's?
I, I take that back. Yes, the thirteen will remain to the property line, from the corner of where the, the, the proposed driveway.
Proposed driveway.
Correct. Be thirteen feet to that property line.
So, it's just not the scale, cause the nineteen versus the twenty-four?
Yeah.
It's just not the scale.
Yeah, that's, that's fair.
Now, you show that at the back of the current driveway, but that's really not the case.
At the back of the current driveway?
Because, you know, you have that shrub there on the, on the previous page.
Yeah. Oh, the, if you look at the prop, so, is it because the property is not even? So, if you look at the property line heads, uh, not perpendicular, if you will.
I understand.
It heads back like a, uh, it's an irregular shape property. So, it gets wider as you're going back towards the, the back of the end of the driveway?
I, I understand that, but the driveway, as you show it on the map,
Mm-hmm.
essentially squares off with the existing back of the current driveway.
Oh, I see. There's actually, there's about a two-foot difference there.
Okay.
Yeah, where it's, it's, it's dirt and gravel and.
But the, the, what you highlighted on your survey really is not accurate as to the picture.
Where you see the red line, for example?
Correct.
Yeah, the red line should be probably even to where the black, where the black line for the nineteen-foot.
To be pulled, correct.
Yeah, correct. It's probably a eighteen-inch difference.
But that doesn't impact thirteen feet?
It does not. You're talking about thirteen feet to the property line.
Correct.
It does not. Correct.
Are you proposing any curves?
Uh, we may put Belgian block, we're, we have a, um, request them to ask about how much it's gonna, what the cost will be for Belgian block to, to line the entire thing. It wouldn't change the dimensions much, but.
Do you look into the, um, impervious coverage change? Since previously, I guess you just had gravel.
So.
And now you're, you're putting asphalt down, right?
Correct. So, it comes out to four hundred fifty-six square feet. Uh, when we spoke to, I wanna say Anthony Hackett. So, anything over five hundred feet, he said you'd have to have a mitigation plan, be it some sort of drainage pit or whatever. He says as long as it's less, fewer than five hundred square feet, he wouldn't require that.
Right, but I guess I'm looking at more the impervious coverage of the site if you're exceeding what's permitted. Right?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I, I can't speak for Mr. Hackett, but I would imagine when, when they came in for their zoning permit with the driveway modification, that would be one of the things that he took, look at, and it was denied specifically for the width of the driveway. And that's why he's here. So, I'm assuming that was, that was looked at.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and the, you know, the applicant is correct, anything less than five hundred square feet, uh, generally does not, does not require a plot plan and, and engineering doesn't get involved in doing any hydrant.
Yeah.
I'm looking at page seven, the screening for the neighbor. Did you have a discussion with the neighbor about potential screening or not screening?
This was already there before, but yes, we did have a conversation with them.
They're okay.
They're, they're fine with that, yeah. Again, I would argue that it's gonna look nicer now than it does with those rocks there, but that's a judgment call, so.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they're, they're fine with it.
Conversation.
Yep, yeah, we're friendly with them. They were fine with that, yeah.
Um, I guess if you've given any thought, you're gonna pitch, I would assume you're gonna pitch your new section towards your existing driveway.
That's correct.
Not towards your neighbor, but.
Correct. It'll be more of the same. It's all gonna be as one, and it's gonna pitch down. We have a sizable backyard behind that, so it's not gonna, it's gonna pitch away from three six five. It's gonna pitch into our backyard. More, more of the same, the way the driveway is now.
I guess I just have more of a, like a general aesthetics question.
Sure.
You're not planning on having like any old cars with tarps on them or anything parked there long-term or?
No. Our cars are older, but not that old, yeah. No, nothing like that. These are cars, daily drivers.
Gotcha. Did you give any consideration possibly putting a little bit of screening in front on the side from the hillside side?
Uh, I did think about that, cause right now, where, where we have the white stones, that's gonna be turf grass. But we certainly, I thought about adding some sort of shrubbery. I, I like ornamental grasses, something like that, yeah.
Okay.
There's also an elevation too, so we're down a little ways, so it, it's screened kind of just by default. There's a fence, there's some other stuff there, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking aesthetically, we have a nice home and we drive by it all the time and, you know, whatever you can do to kind of screen,
Yeah.
whatever, to make things more aesthetic.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, can I ask, is there, is it already partially, again, I'm sorry, I don't have my.
You might, this one. Yes, that one.
There's, there's, there's greenery, okay.
There, yeah.
Is that, is that, that is on your side or is that on your?
Correct. You're, you're actually, that's entirely our property.
Okay, so it's sort of partial. It already partially have a screen, but, you know.
Yeah, to Joe's point.
The screen you're looking at is actually the bottom of our driveway?
Yeah.
I think the screen is, Joe, that you were speaking of exactly towards, if you were at the street, looking towards the newly proposed paved area?
Yeah, I was thinking more closer, just to kind of give you a nice little.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's deceiving there. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make it a condition. I would just kind of, you know, ask you that something in the future would be nice to just kind of keep our town looking beautiful, which I'm sure would wanna do anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, any other questions from board members? Okay.
Thank you for all the pictures. They're very helpful.
Yeah. Um, I now open it up for this witness on this application to anybody in the public to make a comment. Okay, seeing none, I bring it back to the board. Any further discussion from board members, please? Okay, seeing none. Um, do I have a motion of, for this application to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve based on testimony from Mr. Magro and the fact that, uh, you know, he needs the additional space, his neighbor has no issues with it, and he wants to do all the right things for the community. I have no issues with it.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Greg. Any discussions on the motions?
Council, I'm good.
You're good.
Okay. Linda, can I have a vote, please?
Vice Chairwoman Bergen.
Yes.
Board Member Gugliaro.
Yes.
Councilman Deloissio.
Yes.
Board Member Dallo.
Yes.
Chairman Sarico.
With pleasure.
Mayor Wissenski.
Yes.
Olden and Butler.
Yes.
Olden and Cuddy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the next meeting, it will get, go through a resolution. However, um, it's gonna be the same, go ahead.
So, 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 Mr. Magro, at the next public meeting, the resolution will be memorialized by the Board, captured in terms of your approval. You don't need to be at that meeting. You're certainly welcome to attend. Thereafter, you can start applying to the Building Department for any permits you might need to implement this. There is a forty-five day open appeal period. That appeal period runs from the date of notice of publication of your approval and attracts after the date of resolution adoption. That's the forty-five days within which anybody in the world withstanding can challenge or approve in Superior Court. Given you had no objectives here, it's probably unlikely, but that's just a guess at the moment. So, you're essentially constructing at your peril within that window. If in fact, somebody does appeal you, they go to Superior Court Judge in Hackensack and they're successful and overturn your approval. My guess is unlikely.
Right.
There's always a possibility.
Sure.
So, that window is at your peril, but you can certainly start proceeding, uh, at your own risk during that timeframe.
And that would be after, assuming, after the fifteenth, there wouldn't have been that meeting.
After the fifteenth, yeah.
Which is once our next meeting?
May fifteenth.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Excellent.
All right.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For that.
All the help here, all of your pictures, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, um, next on our agenda, as I said, I was mixing it up, uh, is application file L U B two thousand and twenty-four dash six, Crestwood Lake Concession Stand, three hundred West Crescent Avenue, Allendale, oh seven four oh one, block two oh one, light not, uh, I'm sorry, lot nine. And this is a courtesy review of the new concession stand that is being built at Crestwood Lake. So. I like the.
Thank you.
Maybe still time. It's all time.
And I think.
Larry, who needs to?
Yeah, that's.
On this one, no courtesy review. This is really just master.
There's no.
I think we have the time. That's all. So. Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So, so for the members of the public who are here, this is a little bit of a different type of application. This is a courtesy review. It's a review for essentially consistency with the master plan for the proposed improvements within the borough. It's sort of an atypical application, so you might see a different cadence from the prior application and from the next one, which some of you folks might be here for, might be here for this one. This would probably be relatively brief.
Yeah.
Full term to the presenters. We can swear you in, we don't have to. My recommendation would be, be sworn in.
I agree.
You're gonna make a statement before the public body, so, um, the board doesn't vote. The, the board doesn't vote. No, it's really a master plan consistency review, it's courtesy review.
Sure.
So, if you would, um, your names for the record, spell your last names.
Sure.
Provide an address and then.
Sure.
yours.
Tyler Yakarino, Y A C C A R I N O, one oh eight Hillside Avenue.
Stephen Konuk, K O N I U K, fifty-eight Woodland Ave, Allendale, New Jersey.
Thank you very much, honorable members of the Board. Thank you for the time this evening. It was much appreciated. Uh, the project to which we are speaking this evening is regarding the existing concession stand structure at Crestwood Lake. I would trust that we're all familiar with Crestwood Lake as members and residents of Allendale. The existing concession stand has been in its current form, uh, for several decades at this point. Um, it has come to the time to which we need to demolish and rebuild a new concession stand. The D P W has acted valiantly to keep the existing structure open in terms of the facilities, uh, the concession area and so forth, um, in a pronged internal discussion within the Facilities, Parks and Recreation Committee. That does not be, it has come to a point where it is no longer feasible, uh, both financially and realistically to keep the existing structure open. Um, earlier last year, we started to review options for replacement of the concession stand, including, uh, pre-fabrication models, things through New Jersey Co-op and so forth. Um, after receiving initial proposals for such, it came to the conclusion that we are in the best interest of the lake and the borough to essentially, um, erect from the ground up, um, working with our architect and professional services within the borough, uh, to create a concession stand that is both uh, realistic and meets the needs of Crestwood Lake members for now and many years to come. And I believe that the current proposal that we have in progress does just that in terms of meeting the needs for Crestwood and also in conjunction with feedback from members and lake staff as well as the D P W. Um, so, we are here this evening to present what we have working so far and also to receive comments from the Board. So, at this point, I'd like to take, turn it over to Stephen to discuss more of the nuances and specifics of the plan.
Yeah, so, um, essentially, we're reconstructing, uh, the concession stand on not major drastic changes, uh, very minor, uh, increases in either impervious area or footprints, uh, same location. Uh, we're going with some sort of, uh, hardy board siding, uh, the color we're still determining, um, and the height elevations, uh, we're keeping fairly consistent with the, uh, what the existing was there. Uh, other than that, it's, uh, fairly simplistic and straightforward.
Location, et cetera, is all remaining.
The location will stay the same, and again, the, the general footprint, and again, the height, impervious coverage and so forth is mainly remaining the same. I would almost look at this as a direct replacement to some respects with minor configuration differences to what's existing.
But even though the configurations are minor, it's gonna be a major impact on the lake because currently now, the way it is, our concession stand is set up is the bathrooms and the concession stand as well as the, the lifeguard and, um, entranceway is all in one area. So, it's, it's a lot of congestion right there when you come in. Um, there's a lot of litter there sometimes because the concession stand opens up on that end. So, while it is keeping the same footprint, the configuration is going to make it much more efficient as far as an operations standpoint and, um, just a flow for the lake.
Certainly.
Just to add, the mayor's saying, when you walk into Crestwood Lake, you approach there and if you remember where the concession stand was, you'd walk into a line where the, where people online were waiting. So, you'd have to go around with this could be opposite.
Correct.
Could you just clarify, the bathrooms, the bathrooms are facing the entrance now?
So, the bathrooms in?
No, they're actually facing, uh, the entryways of the bathrooms are facing the parking lot itself.
Yeah, that's the. Correct.
So, so, just to understand, looking at this drawing, issue page two, looking at this.
Uh, if you're looking at page two, the floor plan, the right of that, uh, floor plan is the, is the lake and the left is the parking.
Okay.
So, the lifeguard, uh, glazing is facing the, the beachfront and the lake itself.
Correct. And the reasoning for that is currently, there's no, where, when you walk into Crestwood, you have the concession stand on your right and the lifeguard office, so to speak, is on the left-hand side. So, right now, the lake director doesn't have an office that faces the actual lake itself. So, that was one of the things he wanted to incorporate, but it's in the sign.
Well, now it's not showing up, it's not showing up.
I think that overview one is really helpful to, for people to understand.
I could see. There you go.
So, essentially, the right side of the, of this plan is facing the lake, the left-hand side is towards the parking lot. Again, that.
Lifeguard access directly to the lake.
So, I would, I would equate the office again. It, it can be generally for the lifeguard, so it's mainly used for the lake director and manager. So, while they're in there for whatever purpose, you know, for lake business, they'd be able to actually look out now and see the lake in terms of what's actually happening out there, whereas now, the existing lifeguard office is essentially in a cinder block building with no outward disbuilding.
Is that a revision from what you turned in, cause that's not the same?
So, this is, so the footprint itself is the same, but the configuration in terms of lifeguard office and then the concession stand area has been expanded.
It looks like, yeah, what is the, um, the two cylinders? Behind the?
So, we have like a small, um, screening for the propane tanks in itself.
Yeah, and there are existing propane tanks of the structure today.
But that will be visible when you walk in, right?
So, it'll be surrounded in either a plant or.
A solid fencing where you can't see it, so.
Something that's pretty, not just, you know, industrial.
Yeah, no, it's certainly.
Okay. And I, is there showers too?
Yeah, so the showers are, there are existing showers today. Um, they are, and again, when you walk into the lake, you'll see them. It's actually a requirement from Bergen County to have the showers.
And will they be open like they are today, or I know in this, the sketch we have, it looks like they're individual stalls.
Yeah, when, we, we've been going back and forth whether they're, uh, the actual stalls around the showers or not. These plans don't show them. I don't think it's necessary.
And again, as the, the showers are today, they are as they are on this plan where they're just open and that also is in accordance with the county requirements.
The new facility, a year-round event, a year-round building.
So, typically, no. Typically, I would say it's open mainly for the lake season, which is.
A seasonal building.
Memorial Day through Labor Day.
Is it possible, though, is the plumbing?
I mean, I. No, no, we're.
They want it to be used.
This would be a, this would.
Winter season.
This would be most likely designed, uh, with a seasonal, as a seasonal structure in itself, based on insulation and any H V A C requirements. Typically, these types of structures are seasonal.
Sure.
So, you.
It would have to be winterized.
Yeah.
Plumbing system would have to be drained.
The cold.
The H V A C.
If, if I understand your question is if we wanted to use it outside of the Crestwood, could we? I mean, I would say probably in terms of having it winter-ready or cold-season ready, uh, because right now, there really is no insulation or anything like that.
Really just like bathrooms and a kitchen, so it's not like it's an area where people hang out inside, cause all the tables and stuff are outside of it.
No, but I guess what I'm saying is if you wanted to do something in the fall or, I assume what happens today is come Labor Day, they shut it down and drain the pipes and all that.
Correct.
So, what I'm suggesting is if it's winterized, then you wouldn't have to do that and it would be solid in the town could use it year-round.
Possibly.
So, we actually don't shut it down right at, at Labor Day. We actually normally shut it down like a little bit later in the fall, so the fall sports can use the bathrooms. And then we shut it down like in the winter when the pipes freeze.
You're a better judge.
Well, nobody really, I guess, up there, you know, playing, I guess, sports and stuff in the winter. But it's not a, you know, a bad thought. I just don't know what that would entail, because when the pipes do freeze, it's.
Finish.
A major problem.
And I don't, I don't, I don't know if the footprint and, and the configuration really has like an assembly room in it, right? I mean, it's, there's some storage rooms, there's a concession stand in it all.
Yeah, right. It's not really a place for.
But there's really no place that a, a, a large group of people would come probably.
It would be the bathrooms, the kitchens.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, and even more so, the, the bathrooms at the Red Barn are open through the fall and spring sport season, typically where a lot of the sports are concentrated anyway. Uh, so those facilities are also available. But, I mean, certainly something we can consider internally.
Yeah. Thank you.
And this also is independent of the ticket area.
The, the badge area, this is independent, so there's the, the small gazebo structure that's. The, the badge area, this is independent. So there's the, the small gazebo structure that's typically used for the check-in process. This is separate from that. So yeah, this, this basically, you know, it's been, that gazebo structure was moved several years ago from, if you recall, when you drove into the lake, you would have checked your badge when you drove in the five pole in that area. So this has been part of a long-term plan, if you will, in terms of really optimizing the flow of entrance and actual usability of the facilities within Crestwood. So this kind of ties that all.
Any further questions from board members? I think the design of the board is worth it. Future proof. Up there.
Credit the design to Stephen.
Huge.
Thank you.
Huge improvement.
And that's, that's everything that we, we've been trying to do with Crestwood in conjunction with the committee, myself, the mayor, Andy and Ed, also on the committee. I mean, that's the goal is to create things that are in the best interest of the community, the lake members and things that quite frankly, they, they just make sense. So that's really our mindset for everything that we're trying to do.
Yeah, I'm very excited for the improvement.
And then just a, a brief timeline, which I know that we didn't touch upon. The hope was to have the, the existing structure demolished for this season. However, the cost of many things these days have made it prohibitive. So thanks to Andy and his staff, we're doing our best to use the existing actual bathroom facilities for this season. The quotes to have portable restrooms were quite high, to say the least. So we will use the existing bathrooms for this year. We are working on some concessions area, concessionary options for the lake members. So that's more information to come. But as of now, the plan is to demolish the existing structure after the lake season. And then we will have this completed by opening day twenty twenty-five.
The kids will be having ice cream all summer long.
That's our creative concessionary options.
Is the concession not working at all?
The, the main issue with the concession stand itself, or at least for the food aspect of it, is to keep it going, so to speak, just would have been highly cost prohibitive.
Yes, your schedule here, so hopefully you hold on to the schedule.
That's all. And then of course, once we do have our final plans, we will be going out to bed.
Any further questions from anybody on the board?
Think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time.
You're welcome. Come on up. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Brief question.
No worries.
Uh, we need your name.
Stand at twenty-two breathing place. Tyler, you mentioned that there's no HVAC in the building?
Correct.
Okay. So I wonder if you would consider, the picture showed it with a black. Considering it's out in the open air, it's out in the shade, might be helpful to have a lighter colored roof to make the interior remain more comfortable.
Right, great. That's, that's a great point. Colors and I, I totally get what you're saying. We'll certainly take that under advisement. It's a great point you raised. We're not final on colors yet, but that's definitely something to take into consideration. Okay. Thank, thank you.
And something when we say no HVAC, uh, we, or I have, I've been putting a, a small condenser unit in that mechanical yard, like either a PRF or like a cassette for the lifeguard.
Yeah. Still hope to keep the building.
Yeah.
Makes it worth it.
Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody else? Okay. And thank you.
Great.
It really is, you know, thank you for my.
Questions or concerns after.
I think the board is, is totally, if I can speak for everybody here in support of what you are doing and all the work. Thank you Tyler for leading. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay. Now. Our third application for tonight, and I, and I want to express my thanks to the, to everybody here for the Allendale Rehabilita- Rehabilitation and Healthcare for allowing or indulging us to move our schedule around a little bit. So the third application here is file number twenty twenty-four dash zero four. The applicant is Allendale Rehabilitation and Healthcare, eighty-five Harrington Road, Allendale, New Jersey, oh seven four oh one, block six oh one, lot seven. And the application is to construct an eighty-five hundred forty-one square foot addition to a non-conforming assisted living and skilled nursing home. So. Tell, um. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, we only have six mem- voting members.
You will have, you will have six voting members.
Uh, we're gonna proceed and see where we go.
Okay.
Fair enough?
They think that makes sense.
You got it.
So. Oh yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna go somewhere. We're gonna try to do that. No later than center. But yeah. But you better go.
I gotta go. Yeah.
Okay. So you? So go ahead. You want to explain that to everybody? If I'm, I'm counting. This is why everybody on. So, so. Because of the application.
Real quick. What about class, class two members? Class one and three.
Yeah, one and three.
Governing body and mayor.
So.
So we, we.
Oh yeah, um, believe me.
So I, I know you know, Mike. So, so council, for the benefit of the record and the members of the public, we've got D relief, which is use variance relief here. The applicants identified multiple use variance items, D two and D four. The applicant will explain what that means. What it effectively means is for a combined land use for, there's mandatory recusals per state statute and case law, which says certain membership of class members are not eligible to partake and participate in the process and of course not vote. That now means your recusal mandatory for two of the members up here on the dais will be leaving shortly. That leaves a balance of six. The applicant's already indicated they're going to proceed. They're entitled to seven voting members on a use variance case. They can proceed with four. They can't vote with less than five. But at the very least, they need a super majority vote of five to be approved. So it's the applicant's discretion as to whether or not they conclude prosecution tonight and let the board deliberate, or whether they continue another time. The applicant's gonna commence and I, I assume Mike give a, a full deck of witnesses with you, operation civil architecture, traffic planning that you'll try to get through.
Yes.
Um, so we'll go through that shortly.
May I just ask one question? In terms of absent board members, what process exists for them to review the record tonight? I don't have a court reporter here.
So the recording will be available to the members who are absent. They'll certify as to.
But they'll be, is there a video recording or just an audio recording?
We're, we're recording video as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's a video.
Recording video as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I needed to know.
Video's gonna get all of our hair that's remaining and no shine at all.
I'm glad I shaved. That's okay.
And, and they'll, you know, they'll sign it out.
Yeah, yeah, I knew that. I just didn't know whether I had to create a transcript quickly to get it to them. That's all I needed to know.
If you get a handwriting and you want to write.
I take detailed notes, so.
It's pretty good. I've done that in the past. It's, it's pretty.
Great, thank you.
Okay, okay. Alright, so. Mr. Del Luisio. Berwazinski. Thank you very much.
Fun.
Okay. So. Oh, yes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So just, I just want to point out, we try and listen to the applications as efficiently and thoroughly as we can. Okay? We do have a policy that we don't let these meetings go beyond a, a crazy amount of time. We will see how this flows. I'd like to take any last witnesses or testimony, no later than ten o'clock, give or take.
Understood.
But we, you know, I, I don't, I don't like to keep, I don't want to, I don't want to keep the board members here, the public here later.
Depending, depending on the witness, I might not want to start one at, after ten o'clock, depending on how long I think that witness might go.
Okay.
I don't, I would not want to bifurcate testimony if I could avoid it.
Thank you. Thank you. And that's, and we feel the same way. Okay, we have no problem. Obviously we have no problem carrying this, et cetera, et cetera.
Understood.
Whatever, whatever we have to do to hear this out completely and to make sure that your testimony is properly reported and your, and your people's testimony is properly recorded and that the public has the opportunity to comment accordingly on each piece.
I appreciate that.
Um, and counsel, thank you. And, and what we try and do is we like to have, you'll present your, you'll present your beginning statements, if you may. And then after that, you know, you call your first witness. Okay. We'll go through the testimony. The board will ask questions. Okay. We'll get it out. We'll have our professionals make whatever comments. And then the public, members of the public, what we will do is we allow for questions of the witness and the testimony that you've heard at that particular point and only on the testimony at that particular point. Okay? Then we'll go through the series of witnesses, et cetera. And then at the end, we open it up to the public. And the public has the opportunity to comment on the application, anything that they've heard and present whatever they'd like to present. Okay? This is the tradition. We haven't had a meeting like this with this many people in some time. This is the way that we conduct this board. Okay? And that's really it.
Just keep, keep me in line.
I've got my guy here to keep me away. So having said that, um. Okay. Please, if you wouldn't mind, we have to swear people.
Not yet.
I mean, just do an opening first. As you swear, you'll do.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure we have everything aligned here. Okay. So please, tell us what you're doing. Tell us why you're here, what you want to do.
Chairman, members of the board, my name's Michael Rubin. I represent the applicant's Allendale Operator LLC, doing businesses Allendale Rehabilitation and Healthcare. And the other applicant is Allendale Assisted Living LLC, doing business as Allendale Senior Living. The affiliated owner is Allendale Real Property LLC. The address of the property is eighty-five Harrington Road, block six oh one, lot seven. The site is improved with a healthcare facility, serving clients in both a skilled nursing facility and an assisted living facility. Applicant seeks amended final site plan approval and variance relief to construct an eight thousand five hundred forty-one square foot addition to the skilled nursing facility and to modify the parking layout while retaining the existing one hundred and seventy parking spaces. The addition will increase the number of skilled nursing beds from one hundred and twenty to one hundred and forty-two. Ongoing internal modifications to the assisted living facility component will reduce the number of beds from two hundred and eleven to one hundred and seventy-four. So in total, the number of beds on site will be, will be reduced from three hundred and thirty-one to three hundred and sixteen. As reflected in the planning board resolutions that were submitted in conjunction with the application, this was once a permitted use. There are three resolutions granting site plan approval. The first one talks about parking. Neither of the other two, which relate to expansion of the healthcare facility, reference parking spaces. Currently, the property is located in the AAA residential zone where the use is not permitted. Accordingly, a D two variance for expansion of a non-conforming use is required to construct the addition. Another D, another va- D variance, a D four flo- ratio variance is also necessary along with several C variances, including for number of parking spaces. Even though the parking spaces are not being adjusted and the bed count is being reduced, it's still less than what's required by the bed count. Applicant also needs some design waivers and submission waivers. And our engineer will discuss all of those. Applicants witnesses include Alan Esner, who's sitting next to me, who's the operations consultant for the applicants. Ryan McDermott, the applicant's architect. shield Jefaris, the applicant's engineer. Scott Cannell, the applicant's traffic expert, and Paul Grigel, the applicant's planner. Um, because of the number of parking, because the number of parking spaces remain the same, but the number of beds will be reduced. We're gonna leave it to the board to tell us whether they need the traffic testimony or not as we go through this. We submit that the traffic report and are willing to rely upon the traffic report, given the fact that the bed count is being reduced and the parking count is remaining the same. But we will have testimony that the current site functions properly, given the number, one hundred and seventy spaces we have. Unless there are any questions, I'm prepared to call my first witness.
Okay, board members, any questions from anything? Okay. All right, please. Counsel, let's go.
Mr. Esner?
Swear your hand, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to provide as the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Sure.
Spell your last name, provide an address.
Yes, my name is Alan Esner. Um, my last name, well, first name is A L A N. It's tricky. Um, last name.
Spell that one.
I know, I know, believe me. Um, E S E R N E R. Um, I live at two zero three Harrison Avenue in Highland Park, New Jersey.
Mr. Esner, who, by whom are you employed?
I work for Marquee Health Consulting Services. We're a, a consulting company that's retained by the owner of eighty-five Harrington Road to oversee, uh, daily operations, financial, um, advisement. So we work with the administrator, um, primarily onsite.
And how frequently do you have contact with the, with the administrator at the Allendale site?
Uh, I mean, we speak regularly. In all honesty, I'm probably onsite, you know, one or, once or twice a month. Um, I was there today. But we speak more than, I mean, we speak regularly.
Do you, do you, in your capacity, do you deal with all aspects of the operations?
Yeah, yeah. It's, um, like I mentioned, it's, you know, the personnel management, uh, day-to-day operations as well as financial, um, management of the, of the business.
And with whom do you deal with directing, the administrator?
Yes.
Uh, can you explain to the board why the applicant is making the, the changes and particularly constructing the addition to the skilled nursing facility?
Sure. Um, really two reasons. Uh, the first reason is the, um, to best serve the needs of the community. Um, you know, our, our current skilled nursing facility is a hundred and twenty beds. We, um, run pretty close to a hundred percent occupancy on a regular basis there. Um, the assisted living facility, uh, has, has a much higher amount of vacancies. So, um, seems to be, and you know, pretty desired location as far as the short-term rehabilitation needs, get people back on their feet. Our, our goal would be to increase those beds to best serve the community. Um, and we would essentially be reducing the assisted living where we have additional vacancies.
Could you describe for the board the difference in care between the assisted living facility and the skilled nursing facility?
Yeah, I, I, um, really essentially assisted living is a, um, the residents of the assisted living facility are more independent, um, on their day-to-day, uh, their activities of daily living, um, require less assistance. So we provide meals, um, medication administration, activities, um, you know, recreation, things like that. Whereas in skilled nursing facility, um, in addition to providing meals, uh, recreation and entertainment, we, um, also provide a higher level of nursing care. So, um, you know, either whether they're a resident of the facility or a patient on a short-term basis coming from the hospital, um, usually they're, they're, they're sicker. Um, it's a, it's a, what we call subacute. So if hospital is acute care, subacute would be one step removed from the hospital. Probably more close to a med service unit, uh, where you'd see, you know, providing a higher level of clinical oversight and care to these patients.
So it's fair to say the changes that are being made to the site are driven by the demands of the surrounding community?
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct.
Now, currently all access to the site is from Route seventeen, correct?
That's the only, yeah, that's the only permissible way that we allow people to enter the property. There, I guess there's an entrance by the residential area, but we have a barricade there, um, at the end of the cul-de-sac on Harrington Road. So that's not permissible for people to use. It's there for emergency use only. Um, if, if someone needs to access the property quickly, but our employees and family members do not, uh, they don't access from the back or the front, I guess.
And, and, and nothing about the modifications that are proposed, proposed to the site will alter that, that circulation path?
No, that's correct. That's correct.
Harrington Road will remain gated and used for emergency access only.
Yep.
Okay. Um, now. Did your staff provide you with, um, I, I'm gonna call them unofficial parking counts to give a sense of how, um, how many spaces might be available during the course of the day and particularly during the peak hour. And first I want you to describe. And particularly during the peak hour, and first I want you to describe when that peak hour is.
Sure.
And then if you could, just give a sense of the range of parking, um. Capacity as well as the parking demand that is, that has been found to be on the site.
Sure, yeah, um, I mean, in preparation for this, we asked our administrator to, um, count the number of vehicles on the property over the course of a few days. Um, and it really ranged, um, at any given time from, um, I guess during daylight hours from eighty vehicles. To a, a peak of a hundred and twenty vehicles, we, the, the. Uh, peak hours would be at three o'clock in the afternoon when we have our morning shift of employees that work from seven AM to three PM. Are leaving, and then the afternoon shift, the three o'clock PM to eleven o'clock PM, employees are arriving, um. That's, that would be the peak hours, when there'd be the most vehicles onsite, but it really never exceeded, uh, I think it was a hundred and twenty-one, where it never really exceeded a hundred and twenty-one, so. Uh, ample parking spaces there, honestly, I've never had, uh, an issue finding a spot coming to the site, um, and I've. Never gotten a complaint from people, we have sites where we do hear from, from visitors that it's hard to park, and this is not one.
Apologies for interrupting, just, I, I'm sorry if you said this, how many employees are in the facility?
Um, I should have that?
I, 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 I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't notice down at my.
It's okay, and even this, this total number wouldn't all be there ever at the same time, but.
And the only reason why this came to mind is you had said that three o'clock peak, so I'm just trying to.
So that, the one hundred and twenty vehicles was at the peak?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so.
Just give me one second, like we had employee counts in here. It's on this, it's on the site plan. Resident employees.
This here?
Yeah. Here's the employee, here's the employee staffing right here, existing conditions, proposed conditions.
So. Saying, uh, eighty-five employees first shift, which would be seven AM to three, uh, forty-nine employees on second shift. Uh, sixteen employees on third shift, um.
And the second shift is three PM to eleven PM?
That's right, sorry, three PM to eleven PM, and third shift would be eleven PM to seven AM.
So under.
How many were on that third shift?
Sixteen.
So the total number of employees under existing conditions is, uh, one hundred, one hundred and thirty-four employees. And then once all the work is done?
Would be total of a hundred and twenty-three?
Twenty-seven.
Hundred and twenty-seven, sorry.
This is, this is before.
Oh, okay, so.
Before the construction.
Current would be a hundred and thirty-four, uh, proposed would be a hundred and twenty-seven employees.
They're reducing employees.
Correct, you're reducing because we're reducing the number of beds. So they're reducing the number of employees, now that's the total number of employees, that's not. You know, remember, the total, the highest shift is eighty from seven AM to three PM, and there are a hundred and seventy spaces on site. Um, one last question, in terms of the residents. To what extent do the residents bring cars to the facility?
I, I'd say, uh, really none of the, of the residents in the skilled nursing facility have their own vehicle. Um, if anyone has in the assisted living, it's, it's minimum, I don't, I don't have the exact number, but it's, uh, essentially none.
In your experience?
Yeah, it's.
Residents don't.
No, they really don't, we have transportation provided for them, uh, to go out of the center, um. But I, I couldn't, I'd probably zero is my answer for that.
So, I mean, I don't. What I think I'm hearing, just kind of.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Information and, and basaging it a little bit differently, at any, at three o'clock in the afternoon?
Yes.
Okay, you're talking about the possibility of. A hundred and, currently.
Yeah, a hundred.
Potentially, a hundred and thirty-four cars.
Yeah.
Potentially, and you have a hundred and seventy spaces, okay, um. And that's assuming none of the residents have a car. So, this may not be the, the time for this part of the question I'm going to pose, but at any given time. You made a comment that you've been there, that you haven't seen a parking issue, that's great, okay, I'm not arguing with that point at all, holiday. Something, has there ever been? A situation, and I'm sorry if I'm not putting the question into the right person, has there ever been a question, has there ever been a problem? With available parking spaces between the employees and the visitors?
We have not had.
Cause any kind of spilling into any other areas?
No, we, we honestly have not had that, we, and, you know, again, assuming a hundred and thirty.
That leads you forward, in other words, I'm trying to say, it leaves you like forty people that could come.
Yeah, and, and again, and not every employee is, is taking a vehicle to get there, um, but yes, we have not, and the, over the three days. Like I said, this unofficial study that we did ourselves, it, it really never exceeded a hundred and twenty-one vehicles even at peak. So with, with the hundred and, uh, thirty-four, um, employees. Hundred and twenty-one vehicles, which would include visitors and anyone else at the time.
Okay.
I have no further questions for this.
All right, thank you, and again, all right, sorry for interrupting.
Oh, please, whenever you, please feel free to.
Board, please, of this, of this.
So I do have a couple of questions, um, just want to confirm, so you're going from three hundred and thirty-one beds down to three sixteen, correct? Um. And you said there's how many assisted living facility people there now?
Are you asking for the current occupancy or the current, oh, current apartments, um, I think it's ninety-eight in the assisted living?
And how, how many in the skilled nursing, nursing?
Today it's one hundred and eight.
Okay, and then employees, you're going to go from one thirty-four down to one twenty-seven, correct?
That's correct.
And. You are stating that the number of assisted living facility is going to go down and nursing is going to go up?
Correct.
Going vice versa?
No, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And what do you, what do you think it's going to go up to?
What, what is going to go up?
The skilled nursing facility.
The bed count?
Yes.
Uh, the proposed would be a hundred and, uh, forty-two beds from a hundred and twenty, current.
One twenty to one forty-two. Thank you.
Welcome.
Board members?
I, I just have a question, the, the assisted living beds, you said it's going from two hundred and eleven to one seventy-four, is that correct?
Um, two eleven to one seventy-four, yes.
So just so I'm clear how this is all, the whole thing is working, you're going to remove those beds.
Hmm.
But at any given time in the future, can you add those beds, beds back, in other words, what if you, the need presents itself? Um, the architect's going to speak to that, okay.
Any else? Okay, as I promised. I open it now up to the public for any questions of this witness. On the testimony that you just heard. Okay, if so, come up, state your name, thank you, sir. And again, please, questions directed to this witness on this testimony, thank you.
From support. Richard LeBlanc, uh, six K Road, Allendale.
When do we go with that?
My, my spelling is L E B L A N C Q. And as I said, I would say six K Road, my backyard. Backs up to the western portion of the facility.
Correct.
And with regard, I'd like to circle back on the employee issue, if I could.
Oh, wow.
Are more employees necessary for the skilled, skilled portion of the facility, skilled nursing?
Are you asking in the future, or i- i- as far as operations go, do we have more employees for?
For, for the future, for the, the plan, for this plan, you're going from, uh, one hundred and twenty beds to one hundred and two. The number of employees that are going to be needed for that increase.
Um. Prelimarily, I would say, you, you asking for a number of employees, I'd say probably four, four employees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or could you tell us?
Yeah, it would.
Well, only say the global question, are more employees necessary for the skilled nursing facility as opposed to assisted living facility?
I- in general, um, the only, uh, way the ratios would be off would be in the clinical employees, I, I don't think I would necessarily say that more. Housekeepers or dietary employees would be necessary, but we would staff it higher related to the clinical staff. Meaning for, we have more nurses and certified aides for the skilled nursing than we do in the assisted living, just based on the need of the population.
So notwithstanding that the total number of beds, if we do from three thirty-one to three sixteen. It's probable that the number of employees are going to increase.
Number of employees would be decreased, no, we, total number of employees would be decreased by seven. Yeah.
That was my question, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so I guess what I think I'm hearing is. You need. First, for, for those that need, there's those that live in assisted living. You need less employees, in other words, I'm kind of trying to pose it into a ratio.
It's not, so it's not really an exact science.
Okay.
Um.
Please, if you would explain.
Sure, so, um, you, you might have more, um, clinical focused employees for skilled nursing. Whereas in assisted living, you may have fewer clinical employees, but you may have more employees for, let's say, um. Entertainment or dining, um, or housekeeping, um, so it's not an exact science, but. Um, when we put together our numbers, I mean, like we mentioned, the total workforce would be a reduction of seven.
You need us to break down employees by use in the future, let, let me know before we leave tonight, and I will get you that, because we'll probably not.
Let, let us see where this goes, let us see where this goes.
You got it.
If, any. Let us see.
I agree.
Fair enough?
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, any other questions from any members of the public on this, please?
I have a question.
Sure, uh, uh, name and, please.
Mary Van Zelmbach, um, V A N D A L, I N D I, I live at two K, I live by the cul-de-sac. Where the, where the seat opens, and since this, um, you stated that it's only used for emergency. If you GPS it with several different electronic GPS, it brings you to Harrington Gate, so how is that an emergency only entry?
Yeah, so it's actually interesting, I don't, um, I don't run, I don't work for Google, but if you put the name of the facility in, it brings you to Route seventeen. If you put in the address, it does sometimes bring you to, to the, to the back. Well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't give them access, they would have to drive back around.
The wood delivery that was this week going to the gate, walking down and getting the combination going, but the gate's been broken for two weeks, so there was no gate.
Okay, well, I could address that.
Okay, but my question is now you're increasing the facility for, um, medical, uh, rehab. So it means you're going to have more visitors, more people to come visit that, or more transport, which is now all coming to emergency gate, or how do we avoid that?
So I'm, I'm glad you let me know, in all honesty, I mean, we're, we're very strict about. Monitoring that, so if you're saying that they're still doing it, then.
Six third, you go to work, like you said, for the new shit, and go through the gate, everybody knows the combination, so it's not an emergency only gate.
Okay, well, we can definitely, I mean, we could change, I don't know the combination, so.
Well, your workers, and I can tell you.
Well, they should not be using it, so we'll address it. I'm going to, I'll give you my card before we leave, so you can call me direct, my cell phone's on there, yeah, absolutely.
Listen, I'm. I'm not a Google expert here either, okay, um, ma'am, I, 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 I hear what you're saying. Um, and I do know that the entrance is on Route seventeen, and that's where the primary, you know, all of that, and I hear what you're saying, okay, um. Again, I, I'm going to ask counsel, make sure I'm not getting out of line here, but I may be out of line by saying this, but unfortunately, the address is eighty-five. It's, it's, it's not, and you're six up into Google. And that's where it ends up, I'm not saying it's right, I want to be very clear, I'm not saying it's right, and it is. I'm sorry.
They're also stating that's an emergency.
That is, yes, 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 and you've agreed to take a look at that, and you will handle that.
Yes.
We were probably, that would, whatever we do, we would write that into, if this thing goes through, counsel, that would be something that definitely needs to be.
Frankly, it's been, it's been, it's been in prior resolution.
And it has been, yes.
And it should be reinforced, yes.
It would carry forward all conditions that are not modified by the certification.
I, we would suggest that you reiterate.
We would reiterate. We would reiterate. Of any action to the board to approve.
Then we have, you know, we would reiterate it, okay, all right, the board would reiterate it as part of any resolution. If this does impact, move forward, okay? All right. Um, all right.
Anybody else, um, go ahead, and, and, go ahead, please.
So, um, as you are aware or not aware, um, volunteers in the borough of Allendale is huge, and it's impacting. Uh, I know the ambulance corps is hurting for members, the fire department's hurting for members, et cetera, so now you're going to be increasing. Um, the number of skilled, uh, nursing facilities. There you go, there. Do you feel that that number is going, ambulance requests in a facility is going to be all about now?
So it's, it's a fair question, and that's, oh, sorry, thank you, um, we contract with two ambulance services. Um, for this reason, we, we honestly work to partner with all municipalities where we operate, we're not looking to be in an increased burden by any means. Um, so unless it's a, a real acute nine-one-one emergency, we're calling the contract services that we work with. We also have a van of our own that transports people in wheelchairs, um, so, you know, to doctor's appointments and things like that, that we're, we're. We service that, um, but yes, and just the other day, we had an incident where someone needed to be seen, uh, but it wasn't an emergency. And we were able to schedule the transport to come with our private company and not call, uh, EMS, we recognize that they're volunteers and we're not looking to advert by any means.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just worried about that, because.
No, it's fair, yeah.
I do hear constantly sometimes during the day, multiple times, that the ambulance gets requested there, so.
Yeah, I, it's a healthcare facility and emergencies unfortunately do happen, um, but unless, like I said, a patient's in distress or it can't, if it can wait, we don't call nine-one-one.
Have, have your facility thought of, uh, having someone there twenty-four hours, um, to take that need? Just in case there is a medical emergency that they can be there to transport that person to the hospital?
Um, no, but in all honesty, we wouldn't be EMS, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be basic life support if we did that, we, um. But we, like I said, we have two contracts with private companies, and they, they do operate twenty-four hours a day.
Correct.
So if.
Have, have you had a thought of having that, that twenty-four hour company?
Park.
Be at your facility, one of them twenty-four hours a day, in case something happens where they can go and take that individual to there?
We can certainly request it, but I don't, I don't have oversight of the third-party operator, but it's fair, I mean, it's a good idea. We work closely with them, I can ask if they wouldn't mind dispatching someone from there.
Do you, um, do you by any chance know how many, um, requests there are on a monthly or annual basis? Um, from your facility to the ambulance corps in Allendale?
Uh, I don't have that on hand, but I'm sure we can, we can request that from your EMS.
If you could kindly get that information.
Sure, sure.
All right, any other questions from members of the board for this witness? Thank you, um, since there was an additional testimony, does anybody in the public care to? Add to comments or have additional comments based on this last bunch of information that, that we just heard? Sorry, did I? So, uh, yeah, please come up, please come up. And your name and address, please, thank you.
Sure, good evening, uh, my name is Claudia Veraz, H E.
Sure, good evening. Uh, my name is Claudia Horriss, H E R R A I C, I live at two Gloria Drive in Allenville. So I have two comments.
Okay, questions for the witness, because the comments.
Questions for the witnesses?
Yes, thank you.
Um, it is my understanding that the last time there was a request for an addition to that property, there was a, a compromise, a concession agreement, that a buffer be created between the properties, the two properties, about twenty feet of buffer. And when I first moved there, there were many bushes, there were many trees, it looked beautiful. In the ensuing twenty-seven years, at various points in time, all those trees and all those bushes have been cut down by the owner.
Questions?
So, yeah, this, this, thank you, okay. Do you, I need a question.
Yeah.
Of this witness, please.
Are those trees and bushes ever going to be replaced?
We have, we have a site engineer.
Okay, that will be covered later on during that part of the testimony.
Second question, since there are no trees and bushes, apparently there are workers that climb over the fence at night. There's a ladder against the fence, they climb over, and they have drinks there. And it's full of garbage, full of bottles, full of, of red cups, et cetera.
Question, question.
Is eighty, is the owner of eighty-five ever going to clean that garbage which is on their property?
Okay, are you aware of the situation?
I, I don't know if they're employees or other people, but if there's trash, we can definitely clean it up.
Right.
I appreciate letting me know.
Okay. 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 That will be noted in resolution, if it's that.
Right, in conjunction with that, they can remove the, the ladder off of the fence to make it hard for them to climb.
Absolutely. I, I, I'll leave my information with anybody who wants it.
You guys can contact me. Thank you, thank you. Okay, again, any members of the public, any questions directed to this witness? Okay, seeing none, I bring it back.
Yeah, if I, I can ask a couple quick questions. So I, you know, we heard some testimony regarding the, uh, witnesses' experience with onsite parking. I, I was curious if there's any records of any, uh, circulation issues onsite, or uh, vendor benders onsite, or any issues with emergency services circulating the building, or accessing the entry ways?
I'm not aware of any.
None, not aware, no. That's all I have right now.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Counsel?
Thank you. Our next witness is Ryan McDermott, the, uh, architect.
Thank you, sir, for your testimony.
Mr. McDermott? Yes. Please raise your right hand, sir. If you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do. Please state your name for the record, spell your last name, and provide an address.
Sure, it's Ryan McDermott, M C D E R M O T T. Um, the firm is Brahmor Architects LLC at seven twenty-three Electronic Drive, Suite three hundred, Horsham, Pennsylvania. That's Horsham, H O R S H A M, Pennsylvania, one nine zero four four.
I got a call.
Yeah, please do, I will.
Mr. McDermott, would you please give the board the benefit of your educational professional background?
Yes, principal and owner of Brahmor Architects LLC of Horsham, Pennsylvania. Um, we specialize in long-term care and senior living facilities. Um, graduated from Temple University with a bachelor's of architecture. Um, certified with the National Council of, of Architectural Registration Boards. Registered in seven states, including New Jersey, uh, licensed, all in good standing. And I've appeared before many boards, uh, just like this one across the state.
Across the state of New Jersey.
New Jersey.
Um, I ask the board recognizing as a licensed architect. Excepted, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McDermott, could you please describe the existing conditions from an architectural point of view on the site?
Sure. So referencing, um, A zero, which is, uh, not submitted with the original application?
So how do we, how do you mark exhibits?
We'll mark these sequentially. We'll start with A one.
Sure.
Uh, if you could identify the title block, mark it with today's date, and we can go from there, Mr. McDermott. The single sheet, or is this a? So exhibit A one, which is drawing A zero titled Four Plan and Elevations, um, which is actually not, it's a site plan with a aerial image. Uh, the key plan is actually a blow-up of the key plan that was with the A one and A two drawing that they've seen.
Okay, so, so just to be clear, board members, we do not have this drawing. It's not an, it's not an.
You, you have the drawing, just in a smaller version, on the first sheet of the architectural plan.
Understood, okay, but without the, without the.
Aerial.
Okay, good, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So just to orient everybody with the site, um, again, Route seventeen is the main entry for the building. So there's this small drive aisle that comes down to feed the park. So the way the project's oriented in some of the columns of the building, um, this part of the building here, which is the rectangular circular shape with four doors inside of it, that is the assisted living part of the facility, and the remaining part is the skilled nursing. So as you enter the, the, Mr. McDermott, you know.
Oh, yeah, oh, you're blocking the panel there. Yeah, 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 thank you.
Okay. I can hear it, yeah.
All right.
So the, currently, the, the senior care facility, um, contains, um, two hundred and eleven beds. It is currently undergoing renovations to reduce the number of total beds, uh, for that, that facility. The reason is the existing units are studios, and they're on the smaller side, and they're not really marketable, so they work for the residents. So they're gonna take a number of rooms, for instance, three of these existing rooms, and make them into two more. So that's the net reduction of the thirty-seven rooms for that facility. So reducing the number of rooms, making nicer rooms, since this doesn't quite get to that point. So it's gonna be a better product to work. In, in, in addition, there's a, a series of memory care beds that operate under that license, that is forty-eight, that will not change. But that's also factored into the new, when the renovations are finished, one hundred and seventy-four beds for the assisted living. Buildings are connected, but are separated by a rated barrier, by a rated barrier. So this is a hatching shown in this format here, that's all part of the assisted living license. And then we cross the, uh, the side hatching here, is all the skilled nurses. So apparently, there's one hundred and twenty skilled nursing beds. And the addition proposed is in the rear, one-story addition, eight thousand five hundred and forty-one square feet, that twenty-two bedrooms, twenty-two rooms, and B team privates, and, uh, two, uh, two semi-private bedrooms. So that's making it twenty-two. The proposed bedrooms would be, um, very spacious, the privates at a hundred and ninety-five square feet per room, and the semi-privates at five hundred and twenty-five square feet. Each room will have its own private bathroom with a shower. In the nature of the building construction along this rear edge of the, I call it rear, it's, it's, it's in the back with the complex, you know, of, of these skilled nurses. Um, it's a single-story, existing brick-clad linear, um, with nice large aluminum frame windows, and, uh, packaged terminal air conditioning completely pull-up. The architectural, uh, design is to extend that, well, to the addition. So it's really a continuation of the materials and the colors, the elevations, et cetera. The drawing A one, that'll four plan and elevations, which is dated, I believe was referenced in the report of oh, two fourteen twenty-two-three, but I believe there is an issue with state of one nineteen twenty-four.
And that's, that's a sheet that was submitted with the application, correct?
So the location of this addition currently is a dead end of two wings. So this will essentially connect the two dead-end wings and extend outward along that same plane of the existing floor. And again, the elevations are showing, you know, identical window configurations, P-TAC movers, bricks are the same, and the coping, all in touch in the same, so.
It'll blend into the.
So that makes, it's gonna look seamless and not anything. Um, there is an exit at the fore end of the addition that is for egress only. It's not a common entrance or exit for staff residence. It's there in case of emergency fire escape. Sheet A two, uh, proposed addition rendering. Again, reference date was February fourteen twenty-two-three with a, um, issue with state that's saved one nineteen twenty-five. And this is just a rendering to show the continuity of the materials and the dimensions, proportions of the building. It's an extension of all of that, um, it's gonna just look like it was always there.
Can I just ask you to go back to, well, first of all, let me ask counsel, do you wanna mark the sheets that were submitted with the application as exhibits, or do you not?
These are in the record. I'm looking at the packet, Lynda, you have all these.
Correct, they're, they're in the record already.
We don't need to mark these.
Okay.
Now, we've got one marked so far, it's your A one, which was a modified version of a submitted document.
If you could just go back to sheet A one, where, actually, go back to the sheet A O, excuse me. Yeah, exhibit A one. And if you could just point out on the aerial, I think it would help exactly where this building is in relation to everything else that's going on on the site, where the addition will be. You have it, you have it, um, highlighted there, and just, we asked, I think that helps.
This again, is the front drive, front drive aisle of the seventeen comes down along by the acre dealership, and then in through a little wooden drive, and then the addition, essentially, you'd have to go around the assisted living building to come back to see it back there. You really can't get access to it, cannot get access to it, if you go around with skilled nurses, so.
So in relation to the Harrington Road cul-de-sac, could you just show where the Harrington Road is in relation to that?
Sure, so the Harrington Road emergency exit alley is here, and it has no direct access to that back area. You would have to go around the building two hundred and seventy degrees to get to it.
Mr. McDermott, to follow, but I was gonna ask you for the benefit of the board and the public with the rendering, your sheet A two. If you can provide, and I see, Elizabeth, there's a legend on there that shows locations for both images, but if you could provide in your testimony.
Sure.
Where we are standing, what we're looking at, what's behind us, what's around us. Orient the board and the public as to what vantage points these renderings are from.
Sure, absolutely. So again, using the same, um, orientation that, you know, we, we raised in the beginning, to kind of give you an idea, that elevation one is looking from the back side of that addition, the, um.
From the south side of the property, correct?
Oh, that's, that's south?
Yes.
Okay, then yes. So that's looking at the addition, you're seeing the, the proposed ramp, you're seeing the exit door there, and you're seeing the building beyond, just the building. Um, shop two is looking at the other corner of that addition, standing back and forth, and looking at how that looks from the existing parking lot side.
All right, thank you.
Um, what can you show in the, um, overall plan on A zero? Um, what portion of the building is two-story versus one-story?
So if I remember certainly correctly, the building is ninety-five percent single-story, and there is a two-story element that happens here, where the two buildings connect. And that second story is a maintenance shop, it's administrator's office, and a couple of random offices up there. So it's no residence.
There's no residents on the second story? So right where that line.
Yeah, right at this, this line.
And that's the area that exceeds the current thirty-five, I mean, it's already there.
Yes.
The addition will be one-story and will be less than thirty-five feet, correct?
Correct.
I have no further questions.
Board members?
So, um, I'm looking at the site plan, it's very hard for us to pick where the building is on a drawing about one quarter. Building, the addition, the eighty-five hundred square feet, essentially backs up to Gloria Drive. Is that correct?
Um, I haven't deferred the civil engineer, I'm not quite sure where exactly where it's at.
I believe that's correct.
I'm right.
Which is raised way above, has a higher elevation than this site does, and the civil engineer and the planner will both speak to that.
Okay, but, but for.
Yeah.
Perspective, where, where the addition is going, it's, we're not really able to see that with this, but.
He, he shows you, you can see it on the.
We're talking about the top left? We can't see it from here.
Oh, okay.
Nor can this, the audience.
Yeah.
Certainly, we can't.
Okay.
I have to refer to a site plan to get to that, where that is.
Yes, it's the southern portion of the site.
Correct, okay.
And currently, that portion where it's being built, what's on that, what's, what's there right now?
Uh, parking, it's parking, yeah.
Weren't we saying we weren't reducing parking?
Correct, because we're reconfiguring the parking lots, and the traffic engineer will speak to that. I'm sorry, the site engineer will speak to that.
What about, uh, new, you know, HVAC equipment? Where will all that be located?
Right, so we did anticipate there would be a small ventilation top unit, similar to the one that exists there today. Um, most of the heating corn's gonna be contained in that packaged terminal conditioning unit in each unit. So the, the small volume of fresh air is gonna result in a small unit, a little cabinet, and we would probably screen that with a vertical aluminum screen that would match the color of the coating, so we'll, yeah.
You don't have a route plan yet to cite the location of the equipment likely, do you?
We don't, but, uh, based on what the ventilation's been actually served, which is mostly corridors and often that's gonna hit the rooms, it'll, it'll likely be looking at right in the middle of the addition. I mean, you can kind of pull that close to our existing building and away from the line. But, um, I don't think that cabin's gonna be more than three feet tall by five feet wide by four feet.
I was gonna ask, I haven't inspected yet, but that's the anticipated dimensions of the box.
Yeah.
Well, and you have the P-TAC units for each room?
Correct.
Board members? Um, just wanna clarify something. This is new construction, not repair, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, I haven't heard anybody talk about any type of fire suppression or anything like that, as of yet. Um, do you have anything here listed for fire suppression, sprinkler system, anything like that?
Not, not these drawings, but I can testify to what, what happened.
Okay, if you could please, if you could come and what's being put in it.
Um, the sprinkler mains would be extended into the new addition.
Okay.
And we would do the appropriate, uh, remote calculations, make sure we add those below.
So is this gonna be a full NFPA thirteen system?
Yes.
In it?
A hundred percent, yeah. The whole building is today as well. So, um, typically, these small additions can kind of extend the main branch to pick up some additional heads. Um, again, based on the remote coverage, another to inspire at the same time.
Correct.
But based on our previous experience, the, the square footage, it would be a problem.
Okay, um, my second question. Um, my second question is, are you aware of the current radio transmission issue in the current facility right now?
I am aware.
Okay, so there is, and will you be supplying any type of radio amplification system in this new facility, because it's new construction?
Absolutely, i- i- if that's, and what kind of radio transmission would that be?
Um, so when emergency services go into the building. Um, they do have a, uh, an issue with, um, somebody from outside talking in or out, inside talking out. So amplification system inside would alleviate that problem, and radio transmissions would be without an issue going back and forth in and out of the building.
Yeah, I'm sure we can coordinate with them, yeah.
And under the new fire code that is required for all new construction.
May I just ask an ignorant question? Are you talking about like a, like, um, cell signal, or are you talking about?
No, radio signal.
Okay, that's like the.
Yes, like the walkie.
Walkie-talkie kinda things, okay, okay.
If there's such a way to amplify that, I'm sure the applicant would be more than willing to boost that system to, you know, assist emergency personnel.
Um, if I may, I would like to, um, make a recommendation, um, that a radio, uh, survey is done not only through the new, but also through, throughout the existing.
We would be happy to make that, I think.
Thank you, thank you, and we would add that to the resolution.
What about, um, you know, this, this is backed up again to that Gloria Drive, so what about, um, any lighting that's gonna be on the exterior? I've seen some comments about some new wall, exterior pictures.
Um, so we did have proposed on.
A two.
There you go.
Yes, so, uh, A1 shows in practically an elevation, A2 shows in the renderings, but there are four downlight wall pack type lights to assist in, uh, bringing light back into that little parking area there. Um, also to illuminate the emergency press doorway that we're putting in, um, so it'll be fully shielded and downlit, um, and, uh, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't have any.
And that's the elevation that doesn't, that's, I guess, perpendicular to Gloria, or the, the adjacent neighbor.
It fits the interior courtyard between the buildings, not the side that faces Gloria, correct?
Well, I think elevation three is the one that points at the end, if you wanna point to plan where elevation three is.
Sure, yeah, this is elevation three, it's the bottommost elevation.
Right, which shows.
Which is in, which is in the edge of the, at the end of it.
Right, so it's not completely in that courtyard, it's kind of sticking out, that perpendicular to the adjacent neighbor.
We're concerned about light, so we.
Yeah, I understand.
Council, your site engineer right now.
Our site engineer's gonna deal with that, there's some comments in, in the engineer's report about that as well, and he's gonna address those.
Out of the new proposed plan, how many are single bed, uh, uh, single room, how many are two rooms?
So there is eighteen singles and two semi-privates, so twenty rooms total, twenty-two added beds. The semi-privates, if you can reference on drawing A1, are really nice semi-private with a wall between the beds, not like that stacked double, where you traditionally have a nursing bed next to bed, it's, it's a division wall between them, it's for more privacy. Uh, just do the configuration of the footprint in front, keep everything compact, um, that was the best solution.
So one room was eighteen, and how many two?
Two, so.
Are these configurations common in other like-as facilities?
Uh, these, these are actually much improved, um, so those square footages with this arrangement is, um, more than could have acquired much more, and much more plentiful than typical skill nursing.
And you're doing renovations to the existing building too, because you had said, you know, you're taking three rooms down to two.
Correct, so, uh, currently undergoing renovations approved by Department of Health and by Department of Community Affairs, in construction currently.
Probably should've asked this question earlier, but how many of the current rooms right now are empty? That are there?
Or empty?
Yeah.
I think, he, he answered that already, but I'll bring him back up, Mr. Esner, and he can answer that, he knows that better than I.
Go ahead and answer.
Yeah.
Loud enough so we can pick you up.
Yeah, so, so, your answer, I mean, your answer, the answer would change on a given day, right? We, a large part of our business is sub-acute, like I mentioned, so patients admit to our facility and discharge to our facility on a daily basis. Uh, there is a component of our business that they are long-term residents, that were there indefinitely, that are resident, they live there. But there, there's a large portion of our business as well that is short-term, so, whereas, I could answer your question and say today, we have twelve empty beds that very easily change tomorrow.
The rendering, is it an accurate representation of the color scheme, the materials anticipated?
As close as possible.
Okay.
We find every print is a little different, but, um, we ensure that, you know, we provide the exact match.
Board members?
So, just hypothetically, um, with the empty beds that you have, can you do the renovations out of those, instead of doing the renovation and adding to your footprint?
You've got, I think the empty beds are more in the assisted living facility than the skilled nursing facility, but. Oh, you can speak to that, go ahead.
So, if you're referring to the renovations, the assisted living building, um, the assisted living is, is a one license and the skilled nursing is separate license, so those beds can't go back. So the, the, the fact, reality that the, the assisted living isn't as much of a demand with that type of unit, is why we enlarged those and made those bigger by reducing the amount of units. Uh, which, separate from skilled nursing, which is six to one-twenty, and that's only to the skilled nursing.
Thank you.
I, I don't know if this, this is the right witness or not, but one of the questions that I had raised in my report was, um, internal building circulation in relation to the parking areas. And I wanted to make sure that the, uh, parking areas are, are accessible to the different parts of the building, particularly where the entries to the building are. And I don't know if you're the witness to address that question or the civil engineer.
If I may. Whether. Go back to drawing A zero. Referencing the aerial diagram, uh, again, you come in this long driveway here, and the first building you see is the living. Parking currently just all around that building, that adds, continue to go through that drive, there's parking left here, parking along here, parking over here. Parking in front of the skilled nursing entrance, that at this moment is, is really unused. So by reconfiguring this new entry and adding this new wing, more of that circulation for the skilled nursing will happen in this parking lot, the one that's closest to Harrington Road.
Yep, I, I, and the reason I asked the question is that, a couple of times that I've been out there to the site, there, you know, has been a lot of open parking spaces along, I guess, the assisted living portion of the building. And the back parking lot has been pretty much full each time I've been there. But I wasn't exactly sure, you know, why people were picking those parking locations specifically, and, you know, do the empty parking spaces along the assisted living really provide a, a benefit, and are they accessible, you know, internally to the building to address the parking need?
Just to clarify on your comment, you said the real parking lot, was that the parking lot?
Near where the addition.
Near the addition, okay, um, I know that that's a, a, the area where employees enter the building, so there might be a lot more floors in that area all the time, or, or most of, most of their shifts, whereas visitors coming and going would primarily park along the front of the assisted living, or in this parking lot closest to Harrington Road, for the skilled nursing.
I mean, one of the things that I would hope, the, if, if this was to be approved, would, the operator would take a look at, you know, where they're gonna have their employees park, to make sure that there's ample open spaces near the entries for visitors to come in the different parts of the facility, particularly if you can't access one part of the facility through an entrance of, of the other part.
Uh, it's a great point, and actually, to speak to that, as part of the approvals that we receive for the, um, the assisted living license, we additionally have construction starting on the skilled nursing side. That is to reconfigure some interior spaces, and what we actually are doing there is moving the employee entry area to the area between the two buildings. So what that's gonna allow us to do is employees are gonna fill that parking lot, fill this dark lot that are between two buildings, that are away from the main entrances, which will open up spaces for the, the entry of the assisted living and the entry of the skilled nursing.
Thank you.
Any relocation of parking spots? Um, is there, is there plans for any, um, you know, light spillage, et cetera, for people parking in the spots, et cetera, for the surrounding residents as well?
The, the engineer will speak to that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Sorry.
Okay.
Michael, do you have anything else that?
Yeah, not.
You wanna raise right now before we put it to the public?
Yes.
Okay, just.
Please.
One more question, please.
Um, with, in regards to the construction, um, obviously, it's brick, actually, brick on the walls and all that. Um, roofing, what is?
Yep, so it'll be a concrete slant on grade with, uh, metal stud, wall construction, um, and metal bar joists, going from long edge to long edge, and it will be a one-hour rated.
Okay, uh, the one-hour roof assembly, uh, truss construction lumber?
Uh, no, it'll be metal bar joists.
It'll all be metal bar?
Metal bar to extend, and wood will also sustain as part of that U-L assembly. Um, it takes into account all the components, it'll have a sheetrock membrane inside it to, to complete that assembly.
Thank you.
Are there solar panels on the roof?
Of the existing building or?
Okay, will that be extended into the?
I don't know the answer to that.
That's something we'll have to get back to you, okay.
A lot of the building works, it only has.
Yeah, I was, I'm actually looking at a Google view, and it looks like the entire building.
I, I, I don't see that the additional electrical load by cover's addition or wire modification to solar systems, I don't think it's gonna, you know, adding those few panels around, you know, the equipment, will generate any kind of offset that they're saying.
Any standby generator proposed to service this addition?
Well, no, the extension of existing electrical system would be simply extending it.
Your DOA's license probably requires you to have it, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's, it's a building code, it's a DCA.
Hey, board members? Michael, we're good?
Nothing more.
Uh, once again, I open up questions to the public for this witness and this witness only, uh, reminding you that you will have comment time for the overall program at the end. Please, Matt.
Hi, uh, Mary Vandalis, yes, you can, um, you said where you're building it, you're taking over parking spots that are in existence?
Right.
There's also dumpsters there, where would those be?
I believe the civil engineer has those.
The civil engineer will give that, all the site issues, he's gonna talk about how the whole site's gonna be reconfigured.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, once again, Richard Blom, um, sick game rocks. I apologize if this is gonna be left for the engineer, but Mr. McDonald, I believe he said that the addition is gonna be eight thousand five hundred forty one square feet.
Correct.
Okay, notice in the application says that it's involved with the demolition of the existing garage, right? So this addition's gonna take that spot and additional spot, what I'm trying to get at is, how big, how big of a footprint are we now gonna be increased?
So total eight thousand five hundred forty.
That's, that's.
Existing accessory or attached structure, that storage shed or whatever that is, is, is going away, and this new addition's abiding the existing thing.
I think he's looking for the delta.
I think the engineer, it's, it's in, it's actually in the engineering, uh, plans and zoning table and the site, and he'll go over that.
Okay, it's an engineering question.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll save it for that.
It, it, it's sort of a plus and minus kinda thing.
Thank you. Okay, any other members of the public? Okay, bringing it back to the board one more time, this witness? Okay, seeing none, council?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next witness is Teal Jeffress, uh, the applicant's engineer.
Jeffress, good evening. Please, please raise your hand, sir, do you swear or affirm something, nothing about the truth?
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell your last name, provide a business address, and then your counsel will qualify you.
Sure, uh, my name is, uh, Teal Jeffress, I'm president of Jefferson Engineering Associates, uh, my first name is T-D-A-L, one color, last name J-E-F-F-E-R-I-S. Uh, our office just recently moved, and our new address is seven oh seven North Main Street, suite two, last row of your jersey.
Thank you, sir, counsel.
Mr. Jeffress, could you please give the board the benefit of your educational professional background?
Sure, um, I received a, uh, bachelor's license in civil engineering from Clark County University in nineteen ninety-three. Um, I, uh, am licensed currently in, uh, three states, Delaware, Pennsylvania, and New Jersey. Uh, I have been practicing, um, in New Jersey as a licensed engineer since, uh, nineteen ninety, uh, nineteen ninety-eight. Um, I have presented in front of many boards throughout the state of New Jersey, and be considered an expert witness, uh, in front of many boards, as well as representing, uh, boards and other municipalities. I'm also a certified municipal engineer, uh, in the state of New Jersey, my licenses are in currently in good standing, and I have, uh, been in front of this board, I believe it was two summers ago, two years ago.
I ask that Mr. Jeffress be, uh, admitted as a professional engineer.
Yes, thank you.
I'm just curious. We did a, uh, we did a informal here, a year and a half to two years ago, on this project.
God, that one. Spent some time.
Yes. You don't remember my face, I, I, you know?
That's sometimes a good problem.
Thank you. Thank you, partner. Uh, Mr. Jeffress, could you please describe existing conditions and then proposed conditions on the site, uh, relative to the modifications that are being made?
Absolutely. For speaking louder, uh, sure, um, I am referring to the site firm's plans that were submitted as part of the application. Uh, it's, it's consisting of eighteen sheets, I have them on two boards, so I have them here to present and discuss, this is all part of the application that has been submitted.
Can you tell us the date of those plans, please?
Date of these plans, the last July is October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. With regard to existing conditions, uh, I'd like to refer to the title sheet here, giving you an overall view of the property, uh, in terms of orientation. I know it's been discussed a little bit with, uh, Mr. McDermott, in this particular orientation, the site is configured so the top of the sheet is essentially north, north is in this direction. So just for ease of conversation, north is at the top of the sheet. Uh, in this case, we have room seventeen to the east of the site, uh, which is accessed to, uh, an existing driveway easement coming in, uh, from the east from room seventeen into the property. The building itself is sit somewhat centrally located within the site, on the very western side of the property, Harrington Road comes in and, uh, with the terminus cul-de-sac, which abuts the property line on the western side of the property. Um, to the south, as is indicated here, uh, is Gloria Drive and the cul-de-sac at the end of Glor- uh, Gloria Drive. To the south, as is indicated here, uh, is Gloria Drive and the cul-de-sac at the end of Gloria Drive, which nearly abuts the southern property line, somewhat central to the site itself. Along the northern property line is also the municipal boundary with the Borough of Ramsey. So the residential properties to the north are located in the Borough of Ramsey. Uh, residential properties to the west and to the south are located within Allendale. And then to the east of the site, uh, is the industrial park, uh, personal facility with the auto dealership and offices and, uh, at least some small industrial uses in that area. With regard to the location of the addition and to help clarify its location, it is here in the southern portion of the, uh, the facility, um, adjacent to or across from the terminus of Gloria, uh, Gloria Drive. Uh, as Mr. McDermott had mentioned, it is accessed through the driveway that comes around the eastern and then southern portion of, uh, of the, of the property. I'm going to refer to the site plan, which has a little larger view, but that just gives an overall of the property.
What sheet number is that?
This is, uh, sheet C two point zero, site plan, site permit plan overall. Then I'm going to refer to one, uh, C two point one and two point two, which are in large versions. The existing facility, as, as has been mentioned, it's approximately, um, one hundred and eleven thousand three hundred sixty-eight square feet in size, with one and two story sections. There, the property is improved with an asphalt driveway coming in from here, uh, from room seventeen, asphalt paved and curved parking lots and driveways going around the facility, walkways, drop-off areas, courtyards in between the buildings or within the buildings, trash storage area, which is located currently in the southern portion of the, of the property where the addition is proposed, landscape areas, um, and exterior lighting. Um, the other, the other aspect that I wanted to mention, uh, when we come in from Har, uh, from room seventeen with the access driveway, it crosses Allendale Brook, Allendale Brook comes in, crosses the northern portion, portion of the property, and then along the eastern portion of the property, and then continues to the south. Uh, the property is currently served by Public Utility Services that extended from room seventeen and Harerton Road. Uh, stormwater, uh, runoff from the site is handled in two different matters. It's collected and piped, or it's, it's directed by overland flow either into Allendale Brook on the northern side or the eastern side, or from the southern area into a, a grass well, uh, along the southern property line, which then ultimately discharges into the Allendale Brook. Um, as was testified to and mentioned a few moments ago, with regard to Harerton Road and circulation, Harerton Road terminates here at the, at the western property line, there's a guard shack and a gate there to restrict that access into the site. Primary access into the site is from room seventeen. If you come into the site, you have two different directions that you can go. You can go to the south by a two-way circulation driveway that comes down along the eastern side of the assisted living facility, around the southern side of the assisted living facility, and then it circulates through this centralized area here. In this area, it's a one-way circulation with ninety-degree parking and a drop-off loop located here within the central portion of the building. And then exiting those vehicles would then come back out, head back out from seventeen. The other option, as you come in, would be bear to the right, go along the northern side of the assisted living facility, memory care, over to the skilled nursing section. The, this is a two-way circulation driveway, there's a small parking area, area here in the northern central portion of the site, and then it, it gets into a parking area and a drop-off area here for the skilled nursing, uh, and a loading zone here adjacent to the existing kitchen. There was a discussion in terms of, um, Mr. Berlin had asked about the parking and the particular entrances. The main entrance to the skilled nursing is located here on the western side of the property office drop-off loop, for clarification. The entrance to the assisted living is located here on the eastern side, uh, about midway through the building on the eastern, uh, driveway. And then employee entrances are here from the south side into this link or into this area here, where there's also an ambulance pickup, or on the north side from the small parking lots, leading to main buildings. Uh, other than the one-way circulation in here on the southern side, and the one-way circulation through the existing drop-off loop at the assistant, or, uh, this skilled nursing entrance, everything else is a two-way circulation. The improvements proposed are located in three different areas, and I'm going to refer to them as area one, area two, area three, for just ease of clarity.
Mr. Jeffress, before you do that, could you just tell, you know, put on the record the size of the lot and its, and its dimensions?
Sure, the, uh, the lot, as was mentioned, is block six oh one, lot seven. Uh, it's eleven point zero four acres, uh, it's approximately, uh, eight hundred ninety-four feet in depth by approximately five hundred forty-eight feet in width.
Thank you.
With regard to the proposed improvements, there's three different areas. Uh, project area one is at the northwestern corner of the, of the facility. Project area two is in the south-central, and project area three is in the eastern, uh, portion of the property. Starting out with project area one, uh, in the northwestern corner of the facility, this is the entrance to the skilled nursing. The existing parking lot in this area is proposed to be reconfigured and to be modified to have a one-way circulation in a counterclockwise rotation. So cars coming in, uh, along the northern driveway would then circulate through, again, in a counterclockwise rotation, and then be able to either continue that circulation or to turn and exit easterly back out toward room seventeen. Uh, in this area, there are currently thirty-six parking spaces uh, that are really configured in a dead-end, uh, parking aisle here with a few parking spaces on the end. And the reconfiguration, uh, there would be a total of sixty-three parking spaces in this area, which is a gain of twenty-six spaces, which is really gathered through a more efficient layout, uh, in this area and the reconfiguration of the driveway loop. This area will also incorporate two A D A compliant parking spaces with access walkway from those spaces to the entrance, uh, entrance doors, and then relocation of the traction recycling enclosure to the northwestern corner of the parking lot, which is located here. The circulation will also maintain the existing, uh, loading, uh, area here at the kitchen, the northwestern corner of the property, and in terms of locate the trash in a more convenient location closer to that loading area, uh, and that kitchen area. The trash enclosure, there was a comment by the board engineer, just for clarification, uh, is approximately, this is specified to be twenty feet by thirty feet in size, consists of a si- uh, six-foot tall split, split face block, masonry wall, with heavy-duty, uh, galvanized steel gates and slats. The color of that block and the slats would be chosen complement the building color, while the gate structure itself is proposed to be black. Project area two, this is the south-central portion of the property where the addition is proposed. In this area, uh, there is a portion of the building, of the existing building, which was mentioned to be a garage or small penitent, is approximately eight hundred forty-two square feet, uh, is proposed to be removed. And then the new addition is proposed to be expanded here, extending from the end of the existing building and connecting to the end of the other existing wing, approximately, uh, eight thousand five hundred forty-one square feet in size. This will displace approximately, uh, twenty-seven parking spaces, and also displace the existing trash storage area, which is located here. The new building will essentially align plus minus a few inches for the offset, uh, with the existing building and actually remove the trash and the parking area that exists on the southern side of this addition. At the end of the addition, where the access, uh, egress door is located, there will be a ramp for handicap, uh, egress as well as steps, new concrete sidewalk, and some curb in here to reconfigure that particular area. Parking stalls in this area are proposed to be restripped, uh, which will allow us, uh, to regain a few parking spaces and to reestablish this area. This area is going to be maintained as a one-way circulation. Uh, these are ninety-degree parking spaces. There was a comment, uh, the board engineer and I discussed, there was some concern about ninety-degree parking spaces and the one-way circulation in this area. This is an existing, uh, condition, and the drive aisle widths are less than the, uh, counter requirements, this is an existing non-conforming condition. Um, but with the one-way circulation, there was a thought of, what can we do to maybe change that? However, when we looked at that, if we go to a diagonal parking stall, which is typical for a one-way circulation, we would reduce parking in this area further, uh, in, uh, further advance, if you will, or increase the deviation or the variance that would be, that's being requested for parking. Since this is existing, we're looking to maintain that same, uh, configuration, uh, in that particular area. With the building addition here, the existing courtyard, uh, will be shortened and modified, and then there will be a new courtyard created, uh, by the connection of the buildings, uh, here, uh, to the north or northwest of the proposed building. The existing pavement, uh, here along the southern side of the property where the, the parking stalls and the trash enclosure are located, will be removed up to the point of the new curving and sidewalk located approximately here.
What will be replaced?
That area, this area, uh, and I'll get to that in just a moment, will be, uh, grassed, uh, as well as some landscaping added to that area. And I'll talk about the landscaping plan in, in just a moment, but that area will return to a, a pervious or a vegetated, uh, condition. Project area three consists of the eastern drive aisle with the, uh, entrance to the assisted living facility. Uh, in this area, the improvements will consist of constructing an overhead canopy, which will cover the existing drop-off area as well as drop-off walkway. The, uh, establishment of four, uh, A D A compliant parking spaces, the current stalls there are not A D A compliant, so we're going to bring them into compliance, provide a access walkway from those spaces up to the, uh, existing entrance, and then re-strike the balance of the parking spaces with, while maintaining the extent of existing curbing and asphalt that are in that area. In this particular area here, area two, we're going to lose twenty-seven parking spaces. We're gaining one parking space here in, in project area three, and then we're gaining twenty-six parking spaces in project area one, which nets to a balance or, uh, maintains, that's a balance of zero, or maintains the existing parking count of a hundred and seventy parking spaces. The ordinance stipulates apartment requirement is based on one stall for three beds, plus one stall for every two resident employees, plus one stall for every non-resident employee. Under current conditions, with three hundred thirty-one beds and a maximum of a hundred and thirty-four employees and shift overlap, a total of two hundred thirty-four parking stalls are required, currently a hundred and seventy that we spoke about or that testified to, uh, here earlier. Under the proposed conditions with reduction of beds to three hundred sixteen, and the reduction of employees to a hundred and twenty-seven at max overlap of shifts, total parking of two hundred thirty-two is required. And as I just mentioned with the modification, we're maintaining a hundred and seventy parking spaces. While the number of beds and employees are being reduced, the parking required is being lowered, same quantity of parking spaces are being maintained, as currently exists, the variance is required, uh, and there will be some further testimony to that by the traffic, uh, engineer here at Stephen. Utility services, uh, for the proposed building addition will be extended internally from the existing, uh, services within the building, no new lateral connections are proposed. From a stormwater management perspective, the extent of the proposed improvements, they are not considered or classified as a major development under the New Jersey B E P, uh, stormwater regulations, uh, or the town, uh, ordinances. As noted earlier, runoff from the property is conveyed to the Allendale Brook either through pipe conveyance or overland flow along the southern property line. In project area one, I'm going to refer to sheet three point zero. Runoff from, the existing runoff from the existing parking lot is piped to convey discharge to the Allendale Brook. Under the proposed conditions, that piping configuration, it will be slightly, uh, modified and replaced with, uh, with new piping, and then, uh, made, or discharged at the same location that currently discharged, had a big head wall here located along the northern property line.
So what, talk about with the modification? Uh, when you said modification?
The pipe, the pipe itself, uh, the, the size of the pipe will be slightly increased to accommodate current, uh, rainfall events. Uh, the pipe then was in place, has been there for a number of years, and I'm not sure exactly when it was installed, but when we evaluated it based on current rainfall events, uh, we felt that warranted increasing size to accommodate current rainfall events.
What, what is the current size that's there, and what are you proposing going to?
Currently, its size, uh, is fifteen inch, and we are proposing to go to, uh, a twenty-four inch, uh, pipe through there. Now, the point has been brought up by the board engineer as part of the review that under the town requirements, uh, section two twenty-five under school movement and one eighty-six of plot plan, that says requirement for, uh, stormwater management to address any increase in, in runoff from the property. Uh, we will work with board engineer to provide that, currently it's not, uh, proposed as part of the plans, but that's something that will be incorporated to address the board's conditions, or the board engineer's, uh, requirement. Um, one thing I would like to note on that regard is with regard to the overall pervious coverage, uh, in the storm, for the stormwater management, uh, the increase in, uh, total pervious coverage is slightly over, uh, thirty-six hundred square feet. So any, the stormwater management will be designed to accommodate and account for that slight increase in pervious coverage. In project area number two, uh, with the creation of a courtyard area between the buildings, uh, we will be putting in a stormwater, uh, collection device here with piping under the addition, and then piping extending around the addition, uh, and then connecting in to the existing stormwater system within the parking lot. This stormwater system currently drains down to an inlet located here on the southern side of the parking lot, and then overflows uh, down those, a small concrete swell into a grass well located along the southern property line. Uh, this piping system in here is proposed to be replaced, the perforated piping to allow water to dissipate after rainfall events, and the water that's retained within the piping system itself. And in area, project area three, again, there's really, uh, no increase in pervious coverage in here, and there's no modifications to the stormwater, uh, water drainage system in this application. With regard to lighting and landscaping, I'm referring to sheet C four point zero. Uh, in the areas, in the project areas or in the areas of improvements, we are proposing new lighting to be installed to replace existing. Uh, the new lighting is focused again on just the areas of the new improvements. Uh, in project area one, there are, there's proposed new pool mounted lighting, which will be, uh, located around the perimeter of the parking lot, with lighting within the parking lot, uh, within the center, uh, part of the parking lot as well. All the perimeter lighting will be, uh, full cutoff, uh, L E D down style lights with outside shields, uh, which will go, which will control light spillage to maintain that light spillage on the property itself to prevent flare and spillage onto the adjacent properties. These lights, uh, the, the lighting values, uh, will range, um, and we are requesting a design waiver. Uh, the ordinance requires that lighting levels be a minimum of point two foot candles and an average ratio of, of four, whereas uh, in a couple little areas, we have a minimum value of point one and a ratio that exceeds the minimum required, uh, under the light itself, because you have a bit of a brighter area directly under the light standard itself, uh, which then increases that ratio, and we are requesting a design waiver, uh, for those conditions. The light levels that are designed here provide, uh, ample lighting and comply with the requirements for lighting along the walkway. The light levels that are designed here provide ample lighting and comply with the requirements for lighting along the walkways and with regards to the parking area, provide suitable lighting for the employees and visitors. Um, the hours of these lights uh will be from dusk to dawn. The facility runs on the uh runs three shifts, so lighting will be uh throughout the evening uh for when employees come through and or visitors leave. Um, in area number two, where the building addition is proposed, there are four wall-mounted lights uh that were mentioned by Mr. McNerney a few moments ago. They're gonna be located on the eastern side of the addition and are serving to illuminate the exit walkway, the exit steps and the walkway itself. Again, the evaluation of light levels and this plan only account for the proposed lights. The existing lights that have the balance of the property will remain and continue to be utilized. We did not do a full study or analysis of all those lights. There was a comment from the board engineer about the possibility of maybe looking at that, those lights, doing a light function test where we would evaluate them at night with the board engineer to determine if there's any areas that are substandard and may need some additional lighting. We'd be willing to to work with the board engineer to address that uh if that's if that's necessary if the board feels that that's appropriate. Uh, with regard to landscaping, and I know there were a few questions about this, so I'm gonna kinda go through and discuss uh landscaping areas. Going back to project area one, which is in the northwestern corner of the of the property, there are currently eight parking spaces that face the northern property line and four proposed parking spaces in here. Uh, along this property line, there are some evergreen trees um which are right along the property line and there's a fence in there as well. Uh, in light of these existing parking spaces that is proposed, we are proposing to add a hedge around the front of those parking spaces to to block and control flare from uh any headlights uh vehicles using those parking spaces. We are all also proposing shade trees along the perimeter of the park, the, sorry, the western uh perimeter of the parking lot as well as shade trees and some shrubs within the interior uh islands of the parking lot itself. There are some existing trees in the large island that will be removed. Uh, one that will be maintained and then supplemented with some additional uh shrubs and ground cover to provide aesthetics for the interior islands. Then there's another shade tree proposed as well as replacement of uh of an evergreen tree that might be disturbed as part of the the pipe installation. In project area two, which is the building condition area in the southern central portion of the property, again with Gloria Drive here to the south, we are proposing a series of evergreen trees and shade trees in this area that would be planted in the area of the of the former pavement or I'm sorry, the existing pavement and trash storage uh and supplement the existing vegetation along this property line as well as the existing evergreen trees in this area. Along the eastern side of the the addition, there are some shrubs that are planted around the foundation for aesthetics purposes. Uh, but the existing vegetation down through on the southern property line will be maintained. Uh, with regard to Gloria Drive and the and the the buffering on Gloria Drive, Gloria Drive terminates here and we are proposing landscaping here to screen the proposed addition from not only the end of Gloria Drive but also the adjacent property, residential property to the south. One thing of note, uh when you look at the the elevations, existing ground elevations on C three point one, uh along the southern property line, there is a uh a berm. There's a hill that goes up from the property across this well then up. So this property actually sits up higher and that berm, I believe, is four and a half feet or so above the elevation of the existing parking lot. Maybe you're you're keep uh a little bit more than that. So in addition to the that berm as well as the vegetation that's there and the new landscaping that's proposed, we feel that that that's going to provide, you know, an ample buffer along that southern property. Uh, there's no uh the landscaping in the area of project three, project area three on the eastern side of the property will remain uh and there's no modifications uh proposed to that. Now, I'd like to take a moment and and just go back through to summarize uh the variances and waivers that are being requested to Seating. Um, and refer back to sheet two point zero. Uh, as has been identified, uh we are here in Seating requesting a use variance as a proposed use is is not considered permitted. There'll be some further testimony on that by the planner. So I I won't steal this thunder on that one and and provide anything there, but him handle that. Um, the next variance is maximum lot coverage. Based on this lot size, the maximum coverage permitted is twenty-seven point five percent. Currently, it's fifty-one point two percent, which is an existing non-conforming condition. And with a slight increase, as I mentioned, approximately thirty-six hundred square feet, uh that coverage goes up to fifty-two percent. Next variance is a core area ratio. And again, that falls under the the D variance classification and I'll let the uh the planner talk about that in just a moment. Parking quantity, I know there's been a a lot of discussion on this. The required parking based on the proposed conditions after the building expansion is two hundred and thirty-two. There's currently a hundred and seventy uh existing and will be maintained. Again, a variance is required for that and there's been some testimony in terms of the adequacy that the existing parking is suitable and and adequately services the the existing facility uh that will have a reduction in bed counts and employee count. Parking stall size, the ordinance requires ten by twenty. Currently, there's there are stalls that are nine by eighteen and nine by seventeen and three quarters. Those two stall sizes are being maintained and they're predominantly in this area here, which is utilized by the employee parking. Uh, the nine nine by seventeen and three quarters and nine by eighteen, uh as well as some nine by twenty stalls. Uh, nine by eighteen is a common uh stall size for low turnover areas and uses without shopping carts. Again, this would fall into that category, but technically a a variance is required from parking stall size. Drive aisle width, there's a requirement of twenty feet minimum, thirty feet maximum. Currently, the there are maximum widths of thirty-two feet and thirty-eight point seven feet. These are existing non-conforming conditions. Uh, under proposed conditions, we are proposing uh forty-five, go over forty-five feet, forty-five point five to thirty-nine point four feet width. That pertains to the drop-off loop and it essentially an existing width here uh at the drop-off, the skilled nursing as well as the transition uh here at the loading back to the existing driveway. So they are they are variances that would be required. Under design waivers, uh the access road uh is required to be a minimum of twenty-four feet. Currently, where that access road crosses the rock and that small bridge is net and narrows down to twenty feet plus or minus uh and a waiver uh is requested for that existing non-conforming condition. Under section one forty-seven twenty-eight, the drive aisle width uh minimum of twenty-five feet is required for ninety-degree parking. When we refer back again to the central, southern central parking area, which is utilized by the employees, drive aisle widths are twenty-one point one and twenty-three and a half feet currently and are being maintained. Uh, these are existing non-conforming conditions for which a waiver is being requested. Site lighting and some of the light levels, I just provided some testimony to that in terms of uh requirement for that waiver. Uh, vertical datum nineteen twenty-nine datum is it's identified by the ordinances. The survey was based on a N G B D nineteen eighty-eight datum, which is a industry standard. It's common datum uh for that, uh it does not impact the design uh and a waiver is is requested. Drainage features within five hundred feet. Uh, the topography and information provided on the survey does not extend out to five hundred feet, but provides ample overlap to support the design for the improvements. Uh, and a waiver for that, all site uh information is is hereby requested. Uh, light levels um for existing lighting, uh we did not provide light levels for existing lighting. A waiver was requested and as mentioned a few moments ago, we'd be willing to work with the board engineer in terms of doing a light uh a night light test to evaluate uh uh levels and identify if any additional lighting might be necessary. Uh, street profiles, there are no streets proposed, so a waiver for providing street profiles is requested. Uh, stormwater profiles, as a as proposed piping is is to replace existing and connect back into the existing uh onsite. Uh, we are requesting a waiver from providing those profiles. Uh, submission waivers, there was a item number six, uh the submission of a letter of interpretation. Uh, waivers being requested from that because the work being proposed is all within the area of proposed improvements or disturbance. There's no work out into the uh non-discovered or natural areas that that's proposed. Uh, number fifteen, topography within two hundred feet of the site, as mentioned just a moment ago, we we have ample overlap and ample data to support the design uh and do not provide that out to two hundred feet. Uh, and a waiver for that is requested. Number twenty-eight, stormwater profiles, we talked about that just a moment ago with the design waiver. Application to the county planning board and the school conservation district. We are requesting waivers to allow us to handle that as a condition of the board, the board were to approve this application. Rather than supplying it, at this point, we'd like to supply that as a condition of the approval. And then lastly, environmental impact statement, waivers requested again uh because all the work is being proposed within the existing improved or developed area. So that that concludes my testimony and discussion with board and secretary.
And I I just want you to put one more piece of data. Could you give the uh existing and proposed building coverage? So that they understand the delta caused by the removal of the garage?
In terms of short footage or?
Yeah.
He gave that, right? It was eight forty-two versus?
Approximately eight hundred and forty-two square feet.
Right.
Yeah, I had mentioned that earlier.
That's coming out and you're adding eight thousand five. So the so from a site perspective, what's the total? I know the board doesn't have a, the the ordinance doesn't have a a building coverage standard in it, but I just thought that because of the questions that were asked, that might make sense.
There's no way a lawyer beat an engineer on the math with that one.
I don't. I asked him.
I have approximately seven thousand square ninety-nine.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I had.
Okay. Thank you.
Close your mic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
One, one thing that you, on the on the, I hope I get all the directions right, on the southern side bordering Gloria. Um, we had a resident come up earlier, asked the question, and then we said we're gonna hold it too. Something about existing trees, existing trees that are there, which that in your testimony, you said that you were going to remain, but then you were putting new shrubbery, new trees in front of the existing. I'm sorry, in front of the new addition.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. In this this in this area between the addition and Gloria Drive, which is here, along the property line.
Right, right in here. That's where your, that's where your new stuff is.
Yes, yes, this is all proposed landscaping to be added.
Okay.
Give you an idea of reference point, this is essentially going through the edge of the existing parking. This is the existing trash area, parking ends here, and this is currently grassed area here.
Okay. The the landscaping that's in this area, there's like a couple trees or something like that?
There's some, there are some evergreen trees here that are that identified on the survey. Very, if he, this landscaping in here was in detail, I believe the uh planner has some photos of that that he can discuss.
So we're gonna talk about that.
Yeah, he's got photos of the entire site and he's gonna be able to show what's there now and whether or not, and the board can make a determination whether or not they think that's sufficient or needs to be supplemented.
All right, then for now, I'll hold my question.
Okay.
But that's okay. All right, all right, that'll hold it. All right. Um, board members go on. Sure, we all have a bunch of questions, so. Whoever wants to start.
There you uh started talking about proper lighting. I I think it was on the west side of the property that is is changing. Is there like a analysis that of a residential perspective, is it gonna be brighter, is it gonna be darker? With with, you're talking about new technology lighting that you're gonna put in?
Sure, the lighting around the the uh this northwestern parking area will be a full cutoff light fixture, which directs its like downward versus horizontally. Uh, it's gonna be an LED, which is the energy efficient lighting. It will also have outside shields on the backside that are incorporated in the fixture itself to control the throw, the spillage of the light. And when we modeled this, uh we evaluated light levels of of all of these new lights combined and how they interact. And they will contain the light spillage to keep it on the property and not spill over uh up onto the neighboring property uh in a in excess of what's permitted by ordinance. So the way this is designed applies with the requirements of controlling that light spillage uh within the property here. Now, these these levels and so forth also don't take into account the existing vegetation around the perimeter of the property that also further mitigates and prevents any light uh escape of the property. This is assuming that there are no vegetation.
Is there any way to understand the difference between what goes on today and what will happen after the fact? I mean, the net of it is, is that people who live on that side of the property don't want it to be brighter, I can I would suspect. So I guess that's one of my questions.
And as part of the modeling program, that shows us what the light level will be on the ground level as a result of those new lights. Uh, I don't have the ability to to model those existing lights uh that are there to show a like a pre-post scenario with respect to that. But when we did design this, we took into consideration requirements that are within the ordinance for light levels. Uh, I mean, to make sure that we're not producing a problem to the neighboring property. We were very sensitive with the fact that we have residents for the north and to the west as well as to the south of this.
I I understand that what you're putting in the system with the current code for light fixture, light fixture, but in that effect is kind of what I'm trying to get at, so which is what what the neighbors care about.
Not sure how I could describe or evaluate in that effect.
I know, I understand, I'm just saying that that's gonna be concerned with the neighbors.
Now, there will be a, you know, like we said, we'll agree to meet with the board engineer to do a a light night light test to evaluate. Uh, there will also be the ability for the board engineer or the town engineer to evaluate lighting once it's installed, make any adjustments in the field that might be necessary if there's an issue.
Just a concern.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, I mean, are these are these gonna be adjustable LED lights where you can turn them down?
Uh, we do not currently propose them to have dimmers. Uh, if that's a necessity, uh.
And the reason, the reason.
Have that capability.
Right, the reason I ask is that gives uh the applicant a little bit more flexibility to make adjustments if they happen to be in an area that is a problem for a neighbor and also given the fact that they're planning on keeping the lights on dusk to dawn, you know, maybe there's an opportunity they can be turned down when there's no.
I think that's a good suggestion.
Using the lights.
Good suggestion. Especially when the shifts, when the shifts aren't changing.
When things are quiet on the site, there's no reason.
You could probably turn them down.
Not talking about the dimmer, talking about uh lumens, being able to change the lumens of the lighting.
Well, the the dimmer will then reduce the power of the light and the overall light levels.
Right, but the lumens will also vary the color of the lighting.
Right, right now, the lighting that's proposed is a three thousand K lighting, LED, uh which is specifically to account for in a residential area. It's a little bit more in the yellow spectrum, we had a white.
Correct.
The four thousand to five thousand are not recommended for residential areas. Uh, but three thousand is it it really from. Uh, but three thousand is, it, it really from twenty-five hundred, twenty-seven hundred to thirty-five hundred is recommended for residential.
The shrubbery that's being installed around the perimeter, uh, where the lighting is.
Right.
What is, do you have a, um, a height dimension on that now? And?
Well, at, at the time of planting, uh, those time of planting, those will be in the, uh, two to two and a half foot, right? Because that's commonly what's available from a nursery stock perspective. The notes call for that to be maintained as a four to five foot tall hedge as they grow.
Okay.
So that it's maintained as a, as a hedge in front of these parking spaces.
So I'm just, I'm just worried about the lighting spilling over into the residential area. Um, that the residents are gonna be impacted by it.
The lighting from?
The lighting from the parking lot, the lighting from the facility.
Right, okay.
So if you were, if you were to put a larger style bush or shrubbery there, that would obviously block the lighting from spilling out into the residential area.
Well, there's, there are some existing, uh, evergreens along this property line, which the photographs will, will show. Uh, if adding an additional height on the shrubbery would not necessarily impact the lighting from poles. Because the light from poles are coming from above, they have outside shields. They most, they're really intended to block, uh, vehicle headlights as they come, you know, in and out of that parking space. Uh, if, if the board feels, yeah, necessarily could specify as an increase in that size, we'd have to just double check to see what's commonly available for that plant in terms of the caliber of that size. Uh, but we've taken into, uh, into consideration with outside shields on those particular lights to have a cutoff and to control that light spillage.
Correct, like, like, like you said before, we're worried about the residents here, so.
Agreed, agreed.
Hold on, hold on. Um, there was a mention, um, one of the neighbors had mentioned dumpsters were in the, where the parking by the addition is going. Um, where, are there any new dumpsters that are required? And we need to go back, what is, what is the reason for those existing dumpsters?
Uh, I'll look at the facility, I'm speaking for the D for those. Uh, but the dumpsters that are here, as I understand, are two, they'll be relocated up into this area.
Okay. Um, so those two will go into there?
And those two dumpsters are the whole?
That's my mistake, correct.
And X D, uh, storage pods and the other material and debris that's gonna be all?
My, my understanding is that's part of some of the ongoing renovations that's occurring. And as construction wraps up, that will?
That'll, that's not gonna be their permanent.
That's temporary.
So maybe, maybe I missed this somewhere, maybe it's not in here, that's a question for you. The existing storage shed that's, that we're gonna take down, like you're gonna take down.
Yeah, the appendage here.
Yes. What's currently in there, where is, what is the proposal for the, okay, facility, fair enough, okay. That's fair, okay. That's fair. Um, then the other, the, our engineer and we, we, you know, we've gone through this note here. The concern, I believe that's the area where the parking spots are. That's a real tight area in there. Right, that's really, Michael, that's the area that we're concerned there, with the ninety degree parking that you raised.
Yeah, that was the, yeah, that area and, and the other area. Given, given the one-way traffic flow and the narrower drive aisles, we had asked, uh, if the applicant took a look at putting angle parking in and that would provide, uh, better maneuverability? And, you know, what would the consequences of putting the angle park result in? And I, I think, I think the testimony was that if that was converted to angle park, you would end up losing.
Losing spots, losing spots.
There's a little bit of a trade-off there.
Okay, so, the area that's here, is that an open area?
Currently, that's a fenced, uh, courtyard area. I believe that's utilized by the residents of the facility.
Okay.
But that's, that, that's fenced and has light escape concern.
No, wrong, no. Can you steal anything there to move those?
Well, in order to move the, uh?
Just these, just these spots, I realize the building is here. Uh, I'm talking just. I mean, have you, I guess what I'm trying to say, have you exhausted, you know, we, we always, we have these, we have this series of questions that the board always asks. You know, have you looked at, forget the angle parking, forgot if you looked at that, thank you very much. And I'm not being sarcastic, thank you. However, if there's some other thing, some other relief that could be done on the property, i.e. taking out a little bit of this area to widen that, that exit, if you may, for lack of a better word.
Well, in order to widen this here, we would have to increase this area by at least five and a half feet, which would then relocate this entire island, which would push this into the, into the memory garden area. I think it's a memory garden or, let's, let's just call it garden, for lack of better words. That would then also force this building to be reduced. We would ultimately lose two rooms or, correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan. Uh, the rooms on the end because of that shift. Um, we did look at it, would cause a, a significant amount of work in here just to, to maintain and to push that curving an extra five and a half feet to gain that space on a, on a drive aisle with it's current, that exists now. It's not a condition we're creating, it's an existing condition. Uh, when we looked at that, there was a lot of, that just had a lot of hardship in terms of the impact of what it made to the additions. We would have to shorten the entire addition, not by five feet, but whatever the next increment of the room would be, uh, in terms of reducing. So that has a, a greater impact to this area than it might initially seem. Light standards would have to be moved, uh, everything in this area, green is everything that then ultimately be.
Hey, did there's?
The one thing I will just point out of, of interest, but we did evaluate this, this area is utilized by employees.
Understood.
Um, it's not an area where you have visitors coming in and parking. They are parking on the ends. Uh, this is by employees, so you have a very low turnover, except at the ship, uh, ship change. Um, so in light of that, likelihood of having issues, and I believe there's some testimony that there hasn't been really any issues on site so far. Uh, we're not necessarily sure that that's really problematic, given that it's been there for some time, it's operating, and it's limited to employee here. Uh, you know, if, if the board feels so inclined that, you know, in, in lieu of the waiver that's requested for this, uh, you know, there might be the option of just identifying these as employee parking only to minimize the opportunity for a visitor to park in that area and to discourage them. That might be a?
That might not be a bad.
That might not, that might be, you know, something that would kind of appease and, and address that some of it.
Michael, Paul?
Uh, I mean, I, I think it's something that, you know, obviously, I don't think we're gonna make a conclusion tonight. So I think that's something that is worth considering. Uh, I, you know, I, I had a question in, in my report regarding, you know, circulation and signage. Um, you know, certainly, you know, uh, there may be the need for some additional directional signage where, you know, certain parking is on, onsite, particularly if we're gonna designate areas as employee parking. But, uh, you know, we'll take that into consideration as a suggestion by the applicant.
Now, I know we have, I know some of this is existing too. Michael, I did, I, I think I did read your report, uh, fire department, fire department consideration.
I, I haven't heard any fire department. You know, and I, I'm not really in a position where I, I can say, or provide any testimony on there. I mean, the, the plans were submitted, I would imagine they were available for review and comment by other departments and, and other services within the municipality and, and we don't have anything right now.
Board members? Anyone else for this witness? Okay. Alright, uh, Michael, do you have anything or I can open it to the public?
You can open it up to the public and then I'll, I'll follow up when the public's done.
Okay, uh, once again, for this witness, I open up questions to the public for this witness. Sir?
Uh, thank you. James Briggs, two forty-four Nottingham Road, Grand, so, Bransley, New York. Uh, our property abuts the northwest corner of the property, yeah, it's, uh, block fifty-five oh three, lot twenty-two.
Can you spell your last name, please?
Beeson Boyd, R.I.G.G.S.
And your first name?
James.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to confirm a couple of things that I heard, so, the parking in that corner is if it's going from thirty-six current spots to sixty-two? Sixty-three? Um, with the trash enclosure and recycling center, as it's called in the plans, can you just speak to the aesthetics of that again?
Sure, that, uh, requirement is to have a enclosure for the trash. We're proposing a six-foot high, this is a typical or standard enclosure height. Uh, split base, masonry, block four, uh, with, uh, heavy-duty galvanized steel frame system for the gates itself with, uh, an opaque decking material on the face of that, so the one exposed, it's an opaque or enclosed, closure.
Yeah, there's containers there now, which is a pretty big eyesore.
Right, and they, and they're, they're temporary, they're, they're to be removed.
Um, you talked about shade trees going in around the parking area. Am I correct that there's no shade trees that are gonna be planted around that, where trash enclosure is?
There are some existing shade trees in that area that will remain, as well as evergreens. Shade trees are planted here. Right behind is a, uh, proposed trash enclosure, there's an existing drainage adjustment for a pipe that comes from Arlington Road, cul-de-sac around, this charge is out. So we are limited in terms of any planting to be in the front of that structure.
And as you move further northwest, is there gonna be any planning, new planning done there?
Up, up in this area?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's.
There's, there's nothing, uh, proposed in that area, there's nothing out in that area.
Um, can you just, in layman's terms, talk about the design waiver around the lighting and what that means?
Sure, uh, with regards to foot candles, uh, the lighting, part of the word that says the minimum foot candle is point two foot candles uh, on any surface. Uh, when we evaluated, uh, the surfaces, there, there were, I believe, one or two, forget the exact quantity, but there were very limited areas where we were just below that point, want foot candles. Technically, we're requesting waiver because of that slight error, uh, that slight area that is point one foot candle less than the minimum required. With regard to the ratio requirement that pertains to the uniformity of the lighting, uh, if you can envision a, a flashlight, you shine it down, you're gonna have a bright spot underneath the, the flashlight, but then it dissipates as it goes out. There's a ratio considered, uh, when you look at that. And the ordinance specifies a ratio of four to one. Uh, and we have four and a half, and then at one area, it's seventeen to one because of the proximity of the light to the burn. So it just, it's, it's a measure of the uniformity of that light as it comes away from like the true self.
Um, I don't know if this is a question for operations, but with the trash center being in that corner, who will be able to speak to the frequency of sanitation coming during the, during the week, what time during the week?
Operations.
Operations.
Well, I don't know, are you planning on recalling that witness? Because if not, we could perhaps get that answer now.
You can try, if you know, if not, I mean, there were some things that came up during his testimony that I'm, have to review. And may bring him back as a result of that, but if you wanna get that answer now, that's the board's discretion.
If you happen to know, I'll have to get it, I can probably get it before we, here, but I. We'll be back, Mr. Briggs, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
Actually, it's, it's, it's.
Yeah, in keeping it to questions, I think that's all I have, all I have comments. At some other point, but no other questions.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Hey.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Um, Mary Van de Linda again. How many lights are in that, that area right now? And how many were proposing to put in that area right now?
Uh, proposing ten, in this area.
So for twenty-six more spots, you need ten additional lighting?
Total of ten.
So how many are there?
Ten, with regard to existing, I don't know that answer, if not my guess. But there's a total of ten lights proposed in that. So there will be some existing lighting in that area to remove. I know some of the existing lighting that's there is short lantern style lights. Uh, and we did evaluate the efficiency or the coverage of those lights. Uh, but in my experience, a lot of those short lantern style lights just don't have the right coverage uh, for parking lot applications. Uh, I don't, again, I don't know the number of existing lights that are there at the mall.
And the additional lighting is for visitors coming from dusk to dawn?
The ordinance requires lighting, uh, parking areas, walking surfaces and so forth. The lighting is to provide illumination across the parking area and the walking surfaces here because visitor hours will, or return times here is when it, it will be dark, you'll be lighting for that.
And there's a security building, um, a little security building at the gate.
There's a, there's a gar, a gar chack.
Yeah, where's, let's go know that.
There's, there's, that's staying, there's no change to that.
Any change to the gate that's there?
If it's broken, we're gonna replace it.
No, but is there any change to it, if it's gonna continue just being this little?
It's proposed to remain, um, up until tonight, I didn't realize it was.
Me neither.
Broken. Uh, but there's no change proposed to that. And again, the function of this driveway is proposed to remain as a purpose access to the property. There's no change to that.
And what, what's going on, there's a little center where there's trees that's where the ambulances do their little drive around before leaving, the only exits or drop off. What's, what's changing there?
This is the existing island here. So in the latter line, that's being reduced to, to this size.
And then parking spots are gonna come all the way to the gate?
The gate and the gar chack are up here.
Right, so now the parking spots are coming all the way to the gate?
The park, the, the existing parking extends down through here and the curb line extends right to the gar chack. That curb line is being brought back. Parking is being extended down, actually be moved further away from the gate itself. This island will be eliminated, and this will be a one-way circulation, not limited, I'm sorry, reduced, if this is a question. Continuing the problem.
And so to comment on the dumpster, you're saying two were going there from the, where Gloria was? Because there's an additional one to the right. Is that one gonna be housed in there also? There's one to the right now.
Uh, we were putting three containers in here, uh, its size will accommodate the area down below. So the containers that are down below will be relocated here. If I did mention two and there's three, the intent is to relocate what's there.
So our, our thought process is to re, uh, relocate dumpsters closer to, um, a bunch of houses and not further away? I mean, that was the thought process there? I mean, you have the whole.
Process was not to relocate it closer to homes. I mean, it's, it's adjacent to the residential home here in Gloria Drive now.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it's.
So it's adjacent to one person's property, but now you're gonna move it to about ten.
It's being relocated here, uh, where it'll be, be accessed more efficiently and also be closer to the loading area, existing loading area.
Right, yeah, I know where the look. Um, but I'm just saying, you wouldn't move it away from the people, you move it closer? I mean, it's open twenty-four seven, dumpster pickup is five thirty a.m. on Thursdays, if you're aware. Um, so you hear it, so now you're gonna hear it constantly now, four to six. The same.
You're gonna hear it once a day.
Five thirty a.m.
Right, but, but not constant. I mean, right, once a day.
But now you have two more there.
But it's constant, right? People throw garbage in there all day.
Uh, I'm just saying that, why would you move it closer to people and not further away when you have? the empty box where there's nothing?
Has, has there been any evaluation? Have you looked at a possible relocation of the dumpsters where you're proposing it? Away from, away from residents' property lines? Again, this gets into the questions I posed before, you know, have you exhausted every other aspect of where these things could go? That they would cause less of a burden on the residents, bringing it closer to uh, the kitchens or something?
We, we can, we can further evaluate that, um, but the way that the site is configured with this perimeter driveway, the Allen Dale Brook around the outside perimeter of that, uh. Options are limited in terms of where that could go and also be accessible by a truck, uh, and then have maneuverability to turn around. Uh, this location here is not only close, close to the loading area, uh, but also provides the maneuverability for the truck to circulate through the site, uh, much better than it did here on the southern side. Uh. In terms of proximity to the homes, the fact that we have homes on the north, the west, the southern side, that really limits the ability to move it away from the homes, we would then be forced to look at the eastern side, which is then restricted because of the, the brook, uh, and the flood plain associated with that. Uh, we can further evaluate to see if there's another option for that, uh, by all means, but when we originally looked through this layout, um, we really didn't identify any other area, especially since the existing loading is here where trucks will be coming into anyway. So we did feel that it'd be a little bit more appropriate, put it where the trucks are, you know, delivery trucks are all already going, uh, and, and eliminating that for the southern loop, but.
So what if, what if, and again, just looking at the maps and doing this from a layman's standpoint, what if you were to take that? Move it right there. Truck comes in this way, that's it, and it could still continue to loop back through, it pulls it away from property lines. You could, you're, you're giving up two spots there or two, three spots, I'm sorry, sorry, however many you say it is. And then you're putting those spots there, and then you just have cars.
We could, we could look at swapping that and maybe putting it in this area, which would move it arguably another thirty feet further away.
From the property lines. And hopefully, you know, then with the screening, you know, the gentleman, the gentleman did point out, you know, you've got, even though it's been picked up once a week, got it, no argument, but you've got people using that garbage area all times of the day, clean up, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I think that a possible relocation somewhere away from the property lines, like do something to help the residents from a noise standpoint and from.
It's from a backup standpoint, the, the, there's, there's several viewpoints, but there's no regulations as far as how close it's allowed to property?
Can you orient me real quick which spot or which side for seventeens on of that diagram?
Right, right here.
Okay, so can you put the garbage facilities towards that side of the building that goes towards where the commercial section is? Um, towards Route Seventeen?
When we look at this area here, east, eastern side of the property, if you will, we have Allen Dale Brook, the flood plain associated with Allen Dale Brook, which has limitations in this area.
Okay.
Uh. It also puts it essentially in front of the building.
Okay.
So when visitors come in, that's, you're right in, right at the front of the building, which.
But, but you are making them kind of aesthetically pleasing though, correct?
We are, yes, the enclosure, yes, if you want to consider that aesthetically pleasing, yes.
No, I'm, I'm just saying that.
Pressing it up to make it, yeah, a lot, lot.
I'm just thinking that'd be a better area to put than towards the residential side of, of your, uh, land, your facility.
We can absolutely take a look then and see if, if, if something, something in this area might be able to be worked out.
Um, and also regarding the gating on the structure for your garbage, that is auto-closing or is that physically, do you have to physically close it, or will it, if you open it, will the gates automatically shut?
The intent is to have auto, uh, shut gates.
Okay.
Or spring loaded hinges, so that if somebody does walk away and leaves open, it self-closes.
Okay.
Uh, if, I believe the engineer pointed out the, make sure that we tell that on draw, and that's the intent, have it self-located.
Um, and my last question is, with your enhanced parking, have you taken into consideration, um, turning radius of emergency vehicles?
We have, yes.
You have?
We have.
Okay.
We have a, uh. We have a sheet six point three, last plan said, plan intersect, we look at turning maneuvers by all the respective vehicles in the side.
Okay, so.
And those fresh truck.
Okay, so you have the length of the longest vehicle that the borough owns?
We have.
I'm just asking, because you said you, you've done the turn, is turning radius, is that a?
In this, for this loading area in the back, you took into consideration the tractor trailer, three, three rail maneuvering through this area.
Okay.
Currently.
So I do know that, uh, one of the borough vehicles in this town is longer than thirty feet.
Okay.
So.
We, uh, we didn't take into account a specific vehicle.
Okay.
If the, if the fire department has a specific vehicle, has turning information for that, we'd be glad to.
So you might want to reach out to the fire department, um, and request that from them? They know that's something that they can definitely give you. I believe the longest vehicle in the borough is over forty feet long.
Now, we also did take into account here for a straight body, when we put straight body, but again, yeah, we'll, we'll absolutely look at specific vehicles from the fire department and.
Thank you.
Does that ambulance drop off in the same area or has that moved also? Ambulance pickup, come to, drop off, is that in the same area in it?
That, that, that's not being.
That's not being.
Okay. Audience, yes, sir.
Rachel Law, Sixth Gate Road, once again, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, thank you for, to the board members, uh, for raising the questions about the lighting, I'd like to dovetail on that a little bit. Uh, Mr. Jeffers, can you opine or testify that the new lighting plan will not increase the spillage on the residents on Ariton Caton or Gloria, and having been involved with a lighting issue in this town approximately twenty years ago? That became, no pun intended, a political football. It's obviously a, a serious issue.
I understand, again, with regard to the lighting, uh, model that we have, but going utilizing the, the the ice looks values and the I E S files from manufacturers for these specific plates and the outside shields, the, the lighting model for the parking lot here shows that we are controlling the spillage of lighting to, uh, within the property itself, uh, and complying with the ordinance requirements. You, you made mention with regard to Gloria. On this side here, we are always disclosing four wall bands of lights at eight feet height along this side of the building. So the little, they're really on the eastern side of the building, Gloria Drive is over here. Uh, and again, the modeling of that is all localized to this area. We were very, when we designed, as we were, took into consideration proximity to the residential properties, and we wanted the designs, we did not have to be a part of residential.
Here you're saying it's accordance with regulations, will it increase the spillage? Onto the residents.
In terms of increase?
Yes.
I don't know.
We know, we know we have that.
I don't, I don't know if there's spillage that's occurring now, but when the lights are removed and the new lights are put in, the new lights will control spillage from the new lights.
Thank you.
Do we need an evaluation? Is it a circle? Michael, maybe this is a good, should we have an evaluation occurring versus what occurred? Um, so that this, these types of questions can.
Well, I, I, there is a lot of discussion about lighting and, and I understand the sensitivity to it. I, I haven't heard anyone say clearly whether there's an existing lighting problem. Um, I mean, if there is, I think this would be a good forum to let us know, so that people know whether there really needs to be an evaluation of the existing lights. I mean, cer- certainly, I, I certainly, I think certainly, I think certainly.
I believe there's an existing problem. Yeah.
Sure, I agree, I disagree, I think there is.
All right, hang on, all right. I mean. Sir, please, no, no, stay for a second, okay?
I mean, I.
Let's, let's, and I'm going to get, okay?
Certainly, I think, I think we need to, you know, do a, an as constructed evaluation of any lighting that they're proposing and how that interacts with the existing lighting that's out there.
Okay.
Uh, but I, I, you know, I, putting, putting that out there, I like to hear if there's an existing problem.
Okay, building on that for a moment, we're obviously pushing to the next meeting. Do we have some of this information for the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, now, counsel, thank you. Sir, your testimony is?
My testimony is, I'm, I'm okay with what is said.
Okay. Okay, fair enough, now. Ma'am, I'm going to call.
You might disagree.
That, that, that's more than fair. Ma'am, I'm going to call you back.
Do we need to put these people under oath if we're going to have that testimony?
They're taking a statement, I mean, right now it really shouldn't be limited to questions.
Yes.
Questions still relative to lighting.
They don't, and we should do that as a question, because we had a few people just make comments in the audience, it's very hard for the record to.
Yes, it is.
We need to wait while someone's at the podium, that's the forum, this is the target, for lack of a better word, for your questions, uh, Mr. Jeffers, and it's questions based on his testimony to date. There will be a time and a place for comment, that's going to be sworn, that's going to be at the end of the hearing after the applicant concludes their prosecution. For now, it's questions of the applicant's witness.
With all, with all due respect, I would hope that we don't get, we don't go out of turn and start taking testimony on lighting from from neighbors until we can go out and, and have some ability to, to talk to them about that, which we don't have.
We're not having any public testimony until your testimony concludes.
Right.
No, but I, I, I could see I might have been going down that route.
Yes.
Okay, appreciate it.
Can this lady say anything? If you've got a question, Mr. Jeffers.
Okay, all right, all right, and counsel corrected me? Okay. I do have, I have to ask my counsel. Okay, ma'am, I do have one question for her.
But she, she, you can't, you can't ask her a question, she's not under oath.
Not under oath, okay.
She just made a statement before, I just wanted some clarification.
I know, and, and the statement was out of turn unfortunately, there will be a time where she's going to be able to.
It had nothing to do with lighting.
So, but you can't make statements at this point in time.
All right, you'll ask it.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
It's a protocol, unfortunately, you have to file.
Oh, that's fair, that's fair. Okay, any other members of the public, any questions for this witness about the testimony that you heard? Okay, seeing none, I bring it back to the board, any questions from the board? Here. Okay. Seeing none. Uh, counsel, it's ten thirty-seven.
And I'm hungry and tired. Um, I am available on May fifteenth. I don't know about my witnesses.
Okay.
Can you just give me two minutes to speak, to speak to that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know that anybody's available.
Chairman, the two witnesses who haven't yet to testify are not available on May fifteenth.
What about the third?
We, we're going to go find out now what else is available.
The thirteenth?
Day thirteen.
We could do a thirteenth if everyone is available.
The board is normally scheduled.
Day thirteen on a Monday?
It's a Monday night, we normally, we, this board sits for, when we need to, we have a work session as a schedule for the thirteenth of May. Sometimes we use it, sometimes we don't, but we can convert that to a regular session.
Do you advertise it so that, so that when you advertise it, it's advertised that final, final action?
We're not available.
They're not available on the thirteenth either.
Move.
But yes, they would, they would.
But it would be.
June nineteenth?
Yes. That works for me.
Yes, June nineteenth?
June teen.
Okay, June nineteenth it is.
Nineteenth it is.
So time to do a homeless.
Nothing next month, nothing.
No new notice, all time constraints are waived.
We'll, we'll carry a notice, so for the members of the public that are here, there will not be any further notice on this matter, you will not receive any more certified mailings, the matter is being carried tonight to a date certain. That date is June nineteenth, it'll be in this room, seven thirty P M. Feel free to come back, continue to ask questions, I anticipate the applicant will be bringing back witnesses that have already testified, he may not. They testified to conclusion, that includes the witnesses tonight, I suspect they'll get some traffic and planning testimony at the very least, that will continue on June nineteenth, no further notes.
Mr. Chairman, it, based upon what happened tonight, it's my intention to bring everyone back but Mr. McDermott, the architect. Uh, obviously, Mr. Jeffers still needs to clean up some things, we need the traffic and we need the, um, planner. If you believe we also need the architect for any reason, I'll bring him back, but I don't really see a reason for that at the most.
Your dance, counsel, I mean, I, I, I think you've concluded two and three with the architect, I understand your position, it's, it's your call.
Okay, thank you, we'll discuss it with me, uh, with the client.
Thank you. Okay. All right, um.
I put it right on the.
Board members, I normally would ask for any other input on things.
Hold on one second, I'll find it.
Okay, unless there's something present that we need to discuss.
There's any reason Mr. Jeffers to.
For anything else.
From his marriage.
Yeah, we're carrying.
I think he did.
As counsel pointed out, okay. I need a motion to close the meeting, please.
Blue arrow.
Thank you, second, okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much, everybody, meeting is ended, thank you for your time, appreciate everything.